I now declare that the Plano City Council convened in open session that all council members are present. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone that would like to address the council regarding the budget and CIP. All right, I will close the public comments. And I have asked Mark to present the overview.
Mayor and council, first, thank you for your time this evening to go through the budget. We have a number of presentations, starting with our grant funding requests. We will go back through a little bit of the tax rate discussion that we had the other night, just for clarity, for public sake. We've been doing additional homework on the voter-approved rate. And one item that I'll point out to you on that is the last several years, we've been highly focused on the no new revenue rate. So the voter-approved rate has took a little additional work for us to get our arms around some of those elements of that. But we have a short presentation for you tonight on that. And then we have some decisions to make on a few additional requests, an appeal of some of the grant decisions, and then a possible consideration of some security participation with PISD. And at that time, we will ask for direction from council. So with that, I'll kick it over to Karen Rhodes.
Okay, Mark, I didn't really have any formal.
Perfect. Then let's move straight into the grant. That was... So that is a lesson for the audience on how we want to move this meeting along. So with that, we would like to move straight into the grant requests, and we'll move straight into the Heritage Commission.
Good evening. My name is Harold Sickler. I'm Chair of the City of Plano Heritage Commission. And thank you so much for...
Uh huh. There you go.
Okay, perfect. It's my privilege to represent the commissioners of the Heritage Commission and present our 2023-2024 Heritage Grant Recommendations. The Heritage Commission is made up of myself as Chair, Nancy Baldwin as Vice Chair, Neer Alarazul, Karen Bowen, Christopher Robertson, John Dubb Spencer, and Jane Watson. If you want to take a moment to look at the slide, I want to take this time to tell you about some of our accomplishments as a commission. The Texas Pool designation as Plano's 35th Heritage Landmark was completed this year. The S.B. Watson House received Preservation Dallas Award for the Residential Renovation category. Haggard Park Heritage District Design Standards received the 2022 Planning Achievement Award from the American Planning Association Texas Chapter, which is a very important award. And the Heritage Tax Exemptions Ordinance Update was completed as well. As you know, one of our biggest tasks as a commission is to review certificates of appropriateness, applications for exterior work on historic buildings. As you can see, 23 CAS or Certificates of Appropriateness were issued in 2022. Seventy percent of them were approved at the staff level, with 94% of that number being approved in a day or less. I deal, in my profession, with a number of municipalities around the metroplex, and I guarantee you, you don't see things completed in a day in most jurisdictions. So that says a lot about staff and about the quality of City of Plano. Over the past years, we've had several training opportunities from the National Park Service, the Texas Historical Commission, and the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, NAPC. Over the last couple of months, we attended a few of the training webinars hosted by the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. We have quite a few projects that we've been working on that the council will see in the coming months, the biggest of which is conducting the Historic Resources Survey for the 2023 Update of the Heritage Preservation Plan. As noted in your memo, for fiscal year 2022-24, the total amount of funding requested for grants is 900... I mean, requested was $957,331, which is $157,331 above the available funds estimated at $800,000. When it comes to heritage grants, we have criteria that we apply, and there's many things that we do to get to the point to come to these decisions. But our goal is to preserve and promote the City of Plano's heritage, thereby supporting and stimulating local business and strengthening the culture, prosperity, and the welfare of Plano citizens. We have criteria that we follow. When we look at the grants criteria, heritage tourism and public education are 50% of what we're judging the grant request on. The second category is heritage preservation merit, which is 25%, and administrative and fiscal responsibility, how they handle the money, how do they do things? That's 25%. As you can see, and as you're probably familiar with, many of these grants have been funded, have funded many great projects over the years, as well as operations and maintenance of such organizations as the Heritage Farmstead Museum and the Plano Conservancy for Historic Preservation, who are curators of the Interurban Museum. Grant recipient organizations saw an upswing in visitors in 2022. The Farmstead Museum hosted a number of summer camps, special events such as lights at the farm, and completed the Amy Wilson House fencing project. The Plano Conservancy completed cemetery restoration project, several exhibits and events, and published Plano Past and Present book. The Texas Pool completed the pool decking project marketing program, and, most importantly, received designation as Plano's 35th Heritage Landmark. If you look at the slide, you'll see that the commission received four applications this year totaling, as I mentioned earlier, $957,331, with $800,000 available for grant awards. The next three slides will summarize the projects requested by the four applicants. Some of the projects for the Heritage Farmstead Museum included marketing, special events such as the livestock show, the spring extravaganza, lights on the farm, restoration of the Ram Barn and Olney Davis Garage, and pathway and drainage improvements. The Heritage Commission recommended complete funding for special events and marketing, and partial funding for the remaining Ram Barn and Olney Davis Garage, restoration of the pathway and drainage improvements project also. The commission also recommended a sum of $330,000 for O&amp;M, which is the maximum eligible threshold for this organization. The total amount of funds the commission recommended for the Heritage Farmstead Museum was $505,000. Here's a summary for the projects for the Plano Conservancy. Outreach education, cemetery restorations at the Plano Mutual Cemetery, museum marketing, archaeology research outreach, and updates of the Interurban Railroad Museum. The Conservancy withdrew the Old City Davis Cemetery public outreach project. The five remaining projects the Heritage Commission recommended approving complete funding for the outreach and education program, the Plano Mutual Cemetery and the museum marketing and archaeology outreach, and partial funding for the Interurban Museum Post ADA Museum Update Project. The commission also recommended a sum of $145,000 for an O&amp;M, which is the maximum eligible threshold for this organization. The total amount of the funds the commission recommended for the PCHP was $222,248. The Texas Pool Foundation. Here's a summary of the projects for the Texas Pool Foundation. The Heritage Commission recommended complete funding for the master preservation plan and the marketing projects, and partial funding for the umbrellas project. The total amount the commission recommended for the TPFTPS Texas Pool Foundation was $50,081. Next, we have the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library. Here's a summary of the projects that the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library had requested. The Heritage Commission recommends complete funding for the refurbishment of the Masonic section of the Plano Mutual Cemetery, and partial funding for the Plano Masonic Square Monolithic Marker. The Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library is not eligible to receive O&amp;M funds under the program restrictions, and therefore, the commission is not recommending any O&amp;M funding. The total amount of the funds the commission recommended for the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library was $22,671. Just for your information, the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library is appealing some of the Heritage Commission's grant recommendations, and relevant details are contained in the packet you received for this evening's program. In summary, the Heritage Commission is recommending $800,000 for the allocation of the Heritage Preservation Grant Funds to the four applicants as shown on the slide. Just as a note, many of the people that applied for funds, coming into the whole program, they realized they did not have... There was a lot more money. There wasn't enough money to go around. But each group was willing to sit down and say, hey, we're willing to back off and try to help enough money go around for everyone. And so that was one thing I want to commend many of the folks on, and it's really a great time for people to... They share ideas also, and how you can apply for grants and things like that. So that's very good. And so, in summary, like I said, we're recommending $800,000 for preservation grants for the four applicants on the slide. Any questions or comments?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Want to hear from the speaker? Sure.
Robert Pennell.
Mayor and council, Mr. Pennell had actually forwarded some information in your email ahead of this meeting for you to review, but we wanted to make sure to drew that to your attention as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Plano City Council, Plano City Manager, and staff personnel. For the record, I am Robert Pennell, a 43-year Plano resident and the Secretary/Director of the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library in Plano. The museum and library respectfully and formally has appealed and will appeal the O&amp;M property security and asset preservation of classical literature and historic displays, and the Plano Masonic Square Commemorative Masonic Monolith Marker and Monument, and request the city council to approve and grant the museum and library the $2,875 denied for the property security and asset preservation, and the $9,329 to complete and purchase the original monolith marker project, also denied by the Heritage Commission. The city council Heritage Commission liaison representatives, Deputy Mayor Two, Pro Tem Two, and Councilmember Rick Adeli, and relevant city staff personnel have been provided in writing. Ongoing developments regarding the museum and Larrabee appeals after several discussions with all of them. A possible alternative solution to reconcile both the M&amp;L appeal issues recently became apparent this past week, and was also provided in writing for the city council distribution consideration yesterday. And specifically, it was from Ms. Hawkins of the city's Special Projects Department, has been tasked to redesign and develop a theme for the Masonic Square property at 1430 K Avenue to improve its appearance, attract public interest, and promote the Plano Downtown Historic District. The M&amp;L has researched and assembled historic official data supplemented with Masonic archives on that selected piece of city property, and offered to make the information available wherein 1860 Plano masonry first assembled in the now Plano Downtown Historic District. We are the only entity that was on that chart that's in the downtown district. For your information, I had a beautiful 20-minute presentation with slides that I wanted to give to you, but Ms. Henderson and Ms. Snyder overruled me, so they were sent them out to you. Okay. Getting back to Ms. Hawkins, she suggested that the contractual marker monument project be modified and reduced to the two brass plaques at their bid cost of $12,654 until the property redesign was completed, leaving $5,346,000 remaining of the approved $18,000 the Heritage Commission approved. This might also provide a viable solution to the O&amp;M property security and asset preservation of classical literature and historic displaced project without the outlay of additional funding by putting it into a special block grant instead of under O&amp;M. All of the above have been provided in writing to the city council for this deliberation. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city officials, we thank you for your time and consideration. And I think I'm yielding back 14 seconds. Have you any questions?
No, we gave you a little bit more. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, city council, Mr. Mayor, city executives. My name is Johnny Singh. I am the Chair of the Community Relations Commission. I'm here on behalf of the Community Relations Commission and my fellow members to present to you our Buffington Community Services Grant Report. I want to recognize my five other partners on the commission, five individuals who have been excellent partners with me on the Community Relations Commission this year, and also five individuals that are much better public speakers than I am. And I don't have the allotted time to share with you the accomplishments of these individuals, but I will tell you that prior to this meeting, I told them I'd be very confident in the report that I'll be presenting, very confident in the preparation we've done, the thoughtful efforts we committed to this process to share. The only thing I wasn't so confident about is that I would be able to represent them in my public speaking, to represent them in a smooth, polished, unstuttered manner. So in response, the individuals said that they would be here today, make concerted effort, and I know we have a lot of commissioners that are in the audience today. So that's reflective of the individuals that you've appointed, and that represents the latest work of our community. The Community Relations Commission, a big part of what we do is that you have appointed... You've entrusted the commission with overseeing the consolidated grant application process. As all of you are well aware, the city provides grant funding to nonprofit organizations to pursue certain community needs, and with the mindset that there are nonprofit organizations out in the field that are more equipped and optimized to service these needs, as opposed to the City of Plano addressing and operating these services directly. Case in point, Meals on Wheels, a nonprofit organization, they deliver warm meals to households who are having illness or inability to attain those meals. In addition to delivering the meals, they are also making a wellness check. And because of, you know, great marketing, Meals on Wheels, the service is indicative of their name and their market presence in terms of the volunteers and in terms of the beneficiaries, they able to get people to volunteer basically for free, contribute to labor. Or as in contrast, if the City of Plano were to provide meals directly, they would have to expend for the labor and also seek out those beneficiaries. So that's an example where by partnering with these organizations and funding them, we get amplified results. So our requirement for all the organizations that apply is that the grant funding are utilized in services of Plano City Plano residents. The way that the commission makes the recommendations is off of... We all review applications of the nonprofit organizations, and we utilize a scoring system. We score the applicants, and we evaluate them off the score, and our funding recommendations is on the basis of their scores. So with the higher score organizations, with the higher scores gets a higher percentage of their total requested funding, and the lower scores will get a lower percentage. And primarily, the city grants are three buckets of funding, or three sources of funds. They are Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which is a HUD-funded grant, Home, which is another HUD-funded grant. But today, my focus will be on the Buffington Community Services Grant, the BCSG, CDBG, and Home Fund. Our recommendations from those two sources funding have been provided by Shanet Eden back in just last month, July, with the city council. So the Buffington Community Services Grant, in contrast to the CDBG grant, and also in contrast to the Home Funds, is that there's a wider use of... There's a wider range of uses. There's less, or put it another way, there's less usage restrictions. And some of the use examples would be providing for after-school childcare services, for meal services, services to the elderly, counseling services, child advocacy services, basically a very, very wide range with just that it needs to be utilized for Plano City Plano residents. Currently, the BCSG is funded through our city general funds at a per capita of $2, at a budget amount of $2 per capita, so coming out to approximately $585,500. All right. So BCSG eligibility, so basically, again, differentiating from the Home Grant Funds and CDBG funds, which are funded through HUD, BCSG has a wider range of usage. So we have, in terms of the applications for grant funding by the City of Plano, typically they're seeking BCSG funding. And the eligibility is on the slide, but essentially, again, it needs to provide public service activities directly to Plano residents. To give you a time orientation to what CRC does in the context of the consolidated grant process, typically, in August, a subcommittee of our members will get together and deliberate on what has worked previously in the previous grant process and what hasn't worked, and come up with ideas to present to the overall commission at large in our November meeting. And in the November meeting, our commissioners will discuss the grant application, what questions to edit, what questions to take off, and also kind of how are we going to come about in coming to a recommendation. And currently, as a stance, we have a application that is 37 questions, 31 to 37 questions. We have two separate applications, one for housing, home improvement application, and one from public service application. And those range from 31 to 37 questions. And we also have agreed that our recommendation would be anchored to the scoring system, which we formerly called the scoring rubric, which we now call the evaluation guideline. And essentially, we have two touchpoints with the nonprofit organization, the first being the written application that they submit to the City of Plano. being the written application that they submit to the city Plano and to the commission. And also, there is a, each organization has the opportunity to present to CRC. So those are the two touchpoints. And then in January, all the organizations, applicants, are required to attend an in-person training with our city staff, which they will be instructed on the application questions, how to best fill them out, what we're looking for in terms of the commissioners, and also what types of information to present in the public hearing. And then they have the deadline of March 1st to submit their grant application through online, through Zoom grants. And then we, the commissioners, basically have the entire month of March to review the application and all the due diligence documents and submit their score. And just again, for a time reference, each application probably takes between 40 minutes to hour to review, and for the current fiscal year, 2023 grant year, we had 27 applications. So 27 times one hour of time, you know, 27 hours committed to, in approximately 30 days that our commissioners have committed to this process. And then in April, in May is when we scheduled the public hearing for all the applicants for this past grant year, we had, again, 27 applications. So we scheduled four public hearing dates. Each night, we're committing around three to four hours in allowing the organizations to come up in front of the commission. And it's not, it's a way, it's an information gathering process. We communicate to the organization that this is not meant to be the commission judging them as an organization. We acknowledge that they are the subject matter experts in the field. This is us learning about the organization, what they do in our community, and also for us to gather more information on what types of granularity needs there are out in the community in which perhaps the city Plano can fill the gaps in with grant funding. So that happens in April, May, and then CRC then reconvenes in June to deliberate on the recommendation that you have received, and we make a final assessment on which organization is getting funding and which, with dollar amounts. And we've utilized, again, we've utilized the scoring system, which we will overview for you in the coming slides, but basically, any organization that scores a minimum threshold scored of 70 points gets some form of funding. So for this grant year, fiscal year 2023, we received 27 applications, which represents a total request of funding of approximately $2 million. Out of those, 24 are public service applications, which would make them eligible for the BCSG funding. And those 24 applications would be representative of approximately $1.6 million in total request of funding. And this slide is really, you know, just to show there's a bit of a mismatch in terms of demand and funding and the needs out there in our community and our supply of funds. So going into this, we communicate to the organizations in their training in January that, look, you know, we understand there's a lot of needs out there in the community, but we want to be transparent in that the budget funding is in that $500,000 range. And something that our commissioners are very cognizant of is that how we can bridge the process, you know, in terms of sheer math, we can't, there's going to be a built-in disappointment in terms of the ultimate dollar recommendation funding, but what we can bridge is the, our touch in the process. I can say, in my observation of our fellow commissioners, we fully read the applications. We are well aware of the organizations when they come before us, and the questions we ask shows that we, you know, truly acknowledge their expertise in the field and that we're looking for, we're looking for ways that we can best allocate city, the grant funds to their efforts in the community. So I think that's, that kind of intangible is something that we try to utilize in bridging the tangible, you know, built-in disappointment that, you know, there's $1.6 million in needs and we only have $585,000 to contribute to their efforts. So again, we utilize a scoring mechanism to kind of tie our recommendation, and any organization that scores above a 70 will get funded through the city grant, through the BCSG funding, and with higher scores, having a higher percentage of their total request of funding being funded. For this past grant year, we had 27 applications, totally $2,018,899. And of that, again, we're making recommendations for six agencies for CDBG and Home sources of funding that has been presented to you by Shanet in July, and today, we are making recommendation for 18 of those organizations to be funded through BCSG grant funds. And those specific listing and enumeration of those organizations has been provided to you through a memorandum. As some of you may recall, I was last in front of you in City Council back in April of this year. We received some, we reviewed the process of our consolidated grant process, and these three bullet points are essentially the streamlined takeaway of areas of focus. And what we did was the commission, then I took this back to the commission, all commissioners reviewed and listened to the city council, the full city council recording back in April 2023, and I want to present to you how some of the changes we've made within the process. So at a very high level, you know, some of the feedback, specifically, I'll point out to Councilmember Rigadelli, we receive the feedback that perhaps the calling our evaluation guidelines, the scoring rubric, can make it, and also categorizing our point allocation as written application and public hearing can come off as if this is a speech competition or some sort of written application, written competition. And although, you know, when I took this back, the feedback is, I can assure you that within the organizations themselves, we have not gotten that feedback because, you know, some of the par for course for the nonprofit process is that there is a written application, there is a public hearing presentation component. So within the organizations themselves, I don't think that was the issue. But that being said, when there is a perception from stakeholders in the community, whether it's our city council members or perhaps organization that's not a part of this process, they may have the, they may have the perception that, you know, that this is a written, that this is a writing competition or this is a speech competition. Ironic, because I happen to be chair, and speech is not going to, is obviously not, not what we're looking for. But that being said, we recognize that we had a messaging issue. We had a, the way that we're signaling this process. So what we did was we, instead of calling the evaluation process a scoring rubric, which the commission has done since 2018, we changed it to evaluation guidelines. That being said, substantively, the process is still basically the same. We're still two touchpoints in terms of evaluating these applicants. We are receiving their written application, we are having a public hearing with each of the applicants, and part of that is all just due to scale. There's, this year, there's 27 organizations, and we have nine members. To get fair and equal access for our nine members matching schedule with the 27 organizations, we had to limit to these touchpoints. So, but we have gotten rid of the categories of written application, categories of public hearing, administrative, we just call it, we're, you know, we streamlined it. We're just, we're essentially evaluating the applicant. So why not do, why not be more direct in what we're trying to do as opposed to mislead with some of the labelings? And something else is that, instead of, another comment was that we don't want to have the perception that there's any favorable bias, I believe, as Councilmember Prince, sorry, Mayor Proten Prince, that gave the impression that there was a favorability given to existing organizations that received prior funding, because one of our administrative category awarded additional five points for our prior grant recipients. So we've stripped, we've stripped that out to address that feedback. We've also gotten the feedback from, I believe it was Councilmember Smith, about just streamline the application process so perhaps applicants with smaller dollar amounts can have a way to have a more smooth process. And I will address that in my next slide in just one bit. So right here, I apologize for how, there's so much stacked in there, but I wanted to give you a side-by-side comparison of what it looked like, what you guys saw back in April, and what it is now going forward. New meaning for the coming year, fiscal year 2024 grant year, what the process is going to look like. And a big change is that in the written, we've obviously stripped away the written application category and the public hearing category, we are just evaluating the applicant. And a lot of the questions under the written application category were, had to do with, hey, how, how did they answer the questions? Are they within, are the speakers within the timing of that? Again, we weren't grading on their presentation skills, it was just having a very transparent mechanical spelling out of what we're looking for and also to incentivize them to essentially show up for the public presentation. Because ultimately, in some ways, they can have a superior written application that has provided all the written information, and they don't necessarily need to show up because there's not, there's not that separation of scoring. But nonetheless, we heard your feedback, and we wanted to streamline the process because ultimately, we're evaluating the applicant, applicant. So, and another, another key change that you'll notice is that we have reallocated, reweighted some of the points allocations. So we heard feedback from the council members that, you know, we're not prioritizing organizations in this organization that does a lot for the city Plano. So what we did is, of course, we adjusted impact on Plano residents to 15 points from 10. But I just want to highlight, I think you guys understand this, one of the qualifiers for the applicant is that these, any dollar funds rewarded to the organization has to be used for city Plano residents. But that being said, there's going to be organizations that outside of our city funding is already providing a lot of services for the city Plano, so we do want to reward them for those efforts. Another key highlight that would, that addresses Councilmember Smith's suggestion that we somehow streamline the process a bit so that the smaller grand dollar applicants can have an easier time with the application process. We truly, we deliberated that, but it's kind of like, it's kind of like the saying, when you, when we all apply for a loan, the brain damage it takes to apply for a $50,000 loan is just the same as applying for a $1 million loan. Why? Because you're still needing to fill out a loan application, you still need to fill out, provide financial statements, personal financial statements, and the basic due diligence is still going to be there. And ultimately, we are, our city grants are not funded by an individual, it's not a private foundation, Jeff Bezos' private foundation. We have stakeholders and people to report to. So when we deliberated that topic, our commissioners didn't, just didn't feel comfortable in terms of stripping out the basic requirements. But what we've suggested, what we have concluded in doing is in putting number six in our new evaluation criteria, which is evaluating whether the project proposed, proposed dollar funding is proportionate to the amount of service they provide. And what I mean by, the intention to that is, if they are, if an organization is coming to us that requesting $20,000, but they're going to provide, let's use extreme number, they're providing 20,000 meals, wow, what a great ROI. And that's something that we would really weigh and give priority to through our scoring. But then something I want to point out is beyond, beyond what we have in writing, in our process, in our policies, it's the, it's the individuals you guys have appointed. So when we had this kind of scrutiny, this kind of feedback, this is helpful for us as individuals on the commission, because we know what the city council is looking for. We know it's the individuals that's, that's, you know, making determination on the scoring. So we hear you, we hear that we want to make this process easier, and we also want to prioritize perhaps organizations that's doing a lot for very small dollar requests. All right. And so this is, so to give you an overview of the upcoming task, we are in our November, early November scheduled meeting, the commission is going to further, further refine what you see presented to you in the new application, in the new evaluation guideline. We're going to get more granular in addition to whatever feedback I receive from the council members tonight. And also, something else is the housing tax credit process. We await your feedback and determination. We understand that the city Plano has engaged with a consultant to, regarding the process, and we are ready with any direction in that, in that regards. And outside of that, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Johnny. Appreciate it. Any questions for Johnny? Councilmember Rigadelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question, I just wanted to thank you, Chairman Singh, for being open to the feedback that several of us expressed at the meeting back in April. That's great work. So thank you.
Shelby?
To tack on to that, I know that for a few years now, it's had to feel like you're making changes in a policy earthquake, because we just keep tacking on new requirements and changing things. So I appreciate the adaptability. And I'll echo also what I said in April, I think you're doing a fine job speaking.
Thank you. You know, that reminds me, I did, I did, I did hear the feedback in a prior council meeting that council would like more leads, more time to review our recommendation, CRC recommendations in terms of the, not just the CD, not just the BCSG recommendations, but also the CDBG recommendation and the Home Funds. So that's heard, what we can do in the following grant cycle is to push up and truncate our schedule with the public hearings, so then we would arrive at our recommendation at a much earlier date, in June, if you guys would like. So that's totally amenable, and that's why I feel like this, having this feedback, as much as this can be scrutiny, as process scrutiny, but we appreciate the feedback you're giving us, because I can, I can say in the past, past years or so, we haven't quite gotten that feedback with this. There can be a flywheel effect where we can, we can, you know, make the process better, not perfect, but better.
Great example of your efforts to work in the debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cultural arts?
Good evening, council and other members of this well-oiled machine. I am Fabian Gordon. I am the Chair of the Cultural Arts Commission. This is my fourth and final year with the commission, so I'm going to be looking for something else to bother you guys with. So let's get started. Give you an overview of the commission as it stands right now. It's me as the Chair, Misty Hoyt is the Vice Chair, she too will be aging out this year, so that opens up two positions for next year's appointments, followed by Emily Moore, Lisa Klein, Diane Goble, Peter Wynn, and Rita Cosgrove. On the city side, our staff liaisons are Jennifer Knox Walker, our Assistant City Attorney, and Karen Davis, our Cultural Arts Administrator. Some of the things we accomplished this past year, we had, always had one subcommittee that was trying to work on issues related to grant funding amounts, fairness, caps, those kinds of things, and those efforts over the years have stagnated or stalled out. So we, the subcommittee, which I'm really proud of what they did here, they took a different approach this year, and they decided to approach this by looking at eligibility first, because eligibility determines what the maximum amount any particular organization can get is. And the way eligibility has been done in the past, it was taking very top-line numbers, not really applying criteria that determines how much of this money is actually being used for arts or for things that accomplish revenue specifically to hot tax, which is the fund that this money comes from. So in order to kind of regenerate those funds, it would be nice to kind of qualify that a little bit, and that committee's actually made a lot of progress this year. We started a second subcommittee to review the questions, the 20 questions that go out to all of the applicants except for our small arts applicants. except for our small arts applicants, which I'll cover in a minute. Those questions over the years have become a little stale. And in many cases, they're a little redundant. And some of the things they ask are kind of copy paste answers and don't really make a whole lot of sense. So this new subcommittee we formed two months ago, they hit the ground running. They're, they're looking at all the questions, trying to figure out how we qualify and grade the, the applicants and with respect to specifically bringing heads in beds to the hot tax, increasing the variation, the variety of arts and cultural activities because this is a pretty diverse group here. And, and also expose the city of Plano to get other people to come in here and see those things, even if we can't directly affect hot tax, we can always touch other areas of tourism and things like that. So I'm pretty proud of that. We also changed this year, for whatever reason, and no one seems to know the history of that, one of the, one of the processes that the applicants participate in is, obviously, they do their written application, but they have a day that they come in and they do oral presentations. And typically, those oral presentations have been in direct support of the written application, which to me at least, and the other commissioners, seemed a little redundant. It's like, I already read your answers. Presenting those answers again makes little sense. So we opened up the, the, the oral presentation day to where they could present whatever they wanted about themselves. In effect, we can learn more about what those arts groups do by them actually exposing us to what they do. Not all of us, even though we're entitled to go see everything they do, we just don't have that kind of time. It's hundreds of events a year. So by opening the, the oral presentation to whatever format they wanted, it allowed us to see things that we hadn't seen in their performances, the types of art they do, and then interpretations of the art they do, whether it's performance art, a musical art, drawing art, you know, any kind of different art, there's a lot of different things going on here. So that was actually very well received by not only the commission, I think, but, but also the art grant applicants as well. So we're pretty proud of that. Things we'd like to see for next year, obviously continuing to refine the eligibility requirements and changes to promote more equity in the grant process and also hot tax compliance. Continue to promote cultural and artistic experiences that are created within Plano, by Plano and for Plano. And in some cases, we have some waiver and exceptions to that, but that's not important right now. And, and also encourage new, I'm a big fan of incubators and new artistic groups getting their start and finding a way to kind of get funded that first time around. And so that's, that's, that's a cool thing. We have a provision for that. It's not huge, but it is there. And I like to see more people promote that or get the word out that says, hey, you know, come to Plano, base your operations out of here and, and we'll help you, you know, kind of get off the ground and build something. And we have some history that shows that that actually works. So the grant overview process, I'll go through that real quick. There are basically three types of grants. This gets a little complicated. These, the small arts grants are limited to $2,500 or less. It does not require a not-for-profit status and you cannot get more, we cannot do more than four of those a year. That particular grant does not implicate the cap, whatever the cap that you folks set for the year. So that funding is outside of that. The major arts grant, which is our biggest category, I think in terms of the number of organizations that come to us, our organizations, their funding eligibility cannot exceed 25% of the previous year's expenses. They do require nonprofit status and their recommended award is part of the current million dollar cap of funds that we, we receive. We also get quarterly reports from them. They have attendance requirements to our monthly meetings and are also required to provide access to their events or rehearsals to the different commissioners in the group. The events grants, we have four of those. Those organizations are also limited to 25%. They also require nonprofit status. They may request cash or in-kind city services. And if you see who these are later, you'll understand that a little bit. And of course, they report their activities, attendance numbers, allocation of city funds, you know, in the last 60 days. So all of this is monitored throughout the year. Once they receive their, their grant, their, their contract says, this is how you're going to receive your funds, when you're going to receive your funds, and they have to report compliance to that. So it's a two-part process. One part is the written application I mentioned earlier. Window for that opens in February and closes in April. In the small arts grants, there's eight questions worth zero to five points. That's one of the things I'd like to see changed to one to five because zero doesn't make sense. And the applicant must include a proposed budget for their, for the current, for the year they're requesting for. In the major arts and events grants, that's a 20-question, a system that we have called Zoom Grants that we operate out of. All their answers go into that system. We review them. They must have met their 990 information, their tax-exempt information. And all of that is verified and eligibility is accounted for by the budget office. And then part two, we talked about their oral application. They have 10 minutes basically to tell us what they do and how they do it and why they do it. And then we get 10 minutes to ask them questions and answers. And some of it will be related to the written answers they provided, some of it maybe to the presentation they just gave us. And like I said, this year, we changed it so that the format is determined by them. All right, so jumping over to funding recommendations. There were four events, applications received this year and 17 small and major arts. One of those applications was a small arts application. One of the applicants did not pass muster. They have to score 70% or higher on our, on our written questionnaire. And then that's what determines also what they get. So there was one denial this year. It's not the first year it's happened, but I believe there's an agenda item to deal with that at some point. Historically, you know, the, the amount of money that, that has been given to us going at least back five years has been pretty flat, with the exception, of course, of 2020, the C year. But so everything at this point is, is pretty copacetic. So here's how the numbers worked out. What was requested was $1,902,346 between the small and major arts. What was awarded by scoring them was $1,710,560. So this basically says, if you would have gotten 100 on that questionnaire, you would have gotten $1,009 if everybody got 100. But the way the scores panned out, it scales them down to $1,700,000. And then when we apply the cap, that's a million dollar cap. Obviously, the cap is below the awarded by score amount. So everything gets capped at $1,000,000 and everybody's scores get scaled downward to fit that cap. In the events category, what was requested was $396,918, and what was awarded was just less than that at $369,987. Here's the eye chart. So here you can see all of the small and major arts grants recommendations. This is what they were eligible for. This is what they requested. Those numbers don't always match. You see their individual scores and what they were eligible, awarded based on score only. And then the final column is the recommendation scaled to fit the million dollar cap. And you'll see one, there's one small arts grants in there and there was one organization that did not qualify because they got less than a 70% on their questionnaire. Moving forward. In the events category, we had four different events that solicited funding. This is how their numbers played out, how their eligibility numbers vary wildly. I'm sure you can understand why when you see who they are, what they requested and their scores. Their scores are generally pretty high. Those events score very well typically. And their funding recommendation on the right is the result of, of that scoring. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Fabian. You have any questions for Fabian?
I do. So I, I wanted you to go back to that slide with regard to that one, one, one grant that was denied. Yeah, the Plano Art Association. We're dealing with this, so basically you have to be 70 to pass, right?
You have to have a 70 to pass. That's correct.
And so we're talking less than, even, less than even 1%.
Agreed.
So is there like a appeal process where people can actually say, look, can you relook at it? Or, you know, like in court, you have a motion to reconsider, but you know?
We, we discussed that, we discussed that and, and we kind of took a different route to solve this issue. And I believe, correct me if I'm, it's on the agenda for later.
It's the next item.
Okay. Good, then I can stay here. I don't know. So here's the situation. There's a system that does the scoring. And the scoring is, there's seven commissioners that put in their scores and the, and the system gives you what that score is and it comes out to a two-digit precision. It's always been that way. We've never rounded anything. It's just never happened that way. In addition, everybody reviewed these scores and, and these, these numbers were accepted, voted unanimously.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about the scoring process. All I'm asking specifically, when it comes to that close to a decision of grant or not grant, is there a process for somebody who is seeking a grant to come back and ask for a reconsideration or ask for some type of way to, you know, make themselves, you know, their written product more presentable? That's all I'm asking.
So in the current grant manual, I don't believe there is. But also, I kind of need you to understand that their grade is based not only on the answers to their questions. It's there, how many of the meetings have they attended? Have they met those requirements? Have they provided access to their performances or whatever it is they do? In, in this particular case, this organization was not present when these numbers were revealed. So, so I'm not sure you would have gotten very far. I know I've spoken to a couple of different commissioners who effectively drove the score down and they would not budge on that. So I'm not sure an appeal process, if one existed, would have helped. But no, the answer, direct answer to the question is there is currently no appeal process on that.
And what about discussing the reason for the final score that caused them to be denied? I mean, do you sit down with them and tell them, look, you know, if you've done this better or that better, we would have increased your, your score? I mean, is there a communication, a dialogue? I mean, obviously, these are all Plano organizations.
This particular organization has been in this grant group for a long time too.
Yes.
So it was pretty, pretty tough to see that.
Yeah.
There is constant communication between the grant recipients and our budget office liaison. I know that that communications exists often. So I'm sure they were, they were communicated with and told, hey, this is the situation. The management or the senior management, the operational management of this organization has since changed.
I, I would like to see, I mean, I like to make that, you know, suggestion that whenever there is something that, that close, I mean, if we're talking about 50%, I mean, that, that's a different story. When we're talking about less than 1%, 0.1%, that may be, you know, a sit-down conversation. I mean, I understand you resolved it maybe later on, but, but in the, in the formal process, that, that needs to be incorporated where you actually have a sit-down with the, you know, the grant requester and then also allowing them to, you know, at least have the opportunity. If they don't want the opportunity to come back, that's their problem. But, you know, but allowing them an opportunity to come back and fix their problem.
No, I'm sure they want to be back where they wouldn't have applied for sure, right? The difficulty, I think, and I agree with you. I think there needs to be some kind of process put into the grant manual for that. I think the hard part here is this is based on past performance. So how do you fix that? Part of it would be meeting regularly with the liaison, with, you know, with the commission and, and getting feedback from the commission and the liaison. Hey, you know, we, we see some trouble brewing. You can avoid that come grant time if you kind of straighten these things out now. And that probably, we didn't have the opportunity to do that. But there is a quarterly review, quarterly report that they have to submit. And they are required to attend at least one meeting, one general meeting per quarter.
Okay. Councilmember Holmer, did you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you to you and the commission for your work. The arts in Plano are so important and I'm really proud of our city for making the arts a priority. Council, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Two and I were in, at a conference last week and was approached by a councilwoman from another city in Texas who was frustrated with, with how her city was not seeing the importance of the arts. So I was, I was proud to be able to represent Plano and I know we've got a lot of priorities to work on our comprehensive plan of the arts. And I had the opportunity to attend part of your oral presentations. And I wish I could have been there all day because it really was enlightening to, to see, see the different organizations represent there. And I, I really enjoyed what you did with having them do things a little differently. It was, it was exciting to be there. So just wanted to tell you, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Appreciate the commission's hard work and looking forward to seeing what, what, what happens next with the arts in Plano.
Well, I appreciate that. It's very much a team effort. And everyone in, in the commission is, is very thrilled about what they do. They're obviously delighted to, to get exposed to these things and, and participate in these different things and, and have a say in where it goes from there. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Yeah. Real quick, what's the dollar amount that they would have been, if they would have scored at 70, what's the actual dollar amount that was missed out? I know it's not this total number.
It's not in there and I'm, I'm going to give you a really broad stroke because I don't remember the exact number. But if they had scored a 70, I believe it would have been about $3,600.
That's what I was thinking, it was threesome. Okay.
I could be wrong, but I think that's the number I'm remembering.
Okay.
That was close.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
So mayor and council, the next item is funding of agencies outside parameters. So you have two, two items, a formal appeal from the Masonic Lodge. And the way that I read it, Mr. Pennell, I'll just ask that you kind of confirm this with a head nod. It sounds like you have an alternate to the, to the, excuse my, my term, the monument out there going to plaques. And it sounds like there's some funds left over if you move to the plaques that you're asking to use, yes, sir, you can come there, that you're asking to use for operations and maintenance. And that would total $2,875.
The first thing, Mr. City Manager, is I'm 88 years old and very hard of hearing.
Okay.
Okay? And if you would rephrase, I actually know what you're doing and I'm looking at your lips right now.
So it sounds like the project for the monument has changed to plaques, possibly?
Okay. This hit us like a bolt of lightning just last, last week.
Right.
Ms. Hawkins, and by the way, Mike Bell and Ms. Hawkins have always been very good at working with us on everything. She found out about what we were trying to do. And she said, did they give you enough money for the two plaques? And I said, yes, as a matter of fact, and there's a little bit left over. And she says, could we get the two plaques? I says, if we don't get all the money, it's a dead project.
Okay.
And I said, as it is right now. I said, I can't say we can modify it because we have a contract
Right.
with a contractor.
Right.
And she says, could we explore that possibility? We have a call in to the contractor who has not returned the call. Where the idea, her idea was, the marker, like you saw the marker in the handout, might not be quite as appropriate as what she wanted for the redesign of that area. Now, I'm, this is my term. She was looking for a memorial legacy theme, let me put it that way. Well, the biggest theme there is the two Masonic Lodges that were in that park, okay? And I said, we've got all that information. What you, the Heritage Commission has heard all this before. And she says, can we have it? I says, certainly. But she says, well, can we save the plaques? I says, I don't know. And she said, but could you do it, could you do that? And I said, why don't we bring it up to the council, the both, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Two and Councilwoman, uh, Member Rick Adeli had, we talked about this just briefly, but it wasn't part of the plan.
Right. Well, Mr. Pennell, I'm trying to make sure that we get the right dollar amount that we're considering.
Okay.
And so the, the bottom line dollar amount, I know there's the O and M side and I know there's the dollar amount.
Actually, y'all have been furnished that, but since you brought it up, I'm sure I can find that for you.
Well, I had $2,875 on the, on the O and M expense. Was part of that? Hi, Peter.
This is, this is the boss of Ms. Hawkins, okay? And this was just a phone call, so I might be, I might be wrong here.
You're fine. Yes, please.
I think Mr. Pennell wants to reallocate the money from the, for the plinth that he, with the plaques would go on. So still the money for the plaques, the plinth money would be reallocated towards O and M.
Understood.
That's your request.
That was the request. Oh, yeah, were you right?
It's all within the 18, all within the 18,000 would fund it. It's, it's basically allowing the existing funding to be used for O and M and the plaques. And that's, it's, it's 2,800, it's basically, yeah, 2,875. I see yes. I see yeses around there. Mr. Pennell, you're good to go.
Good for you. Can I go sit down now?
Yes, sir, you sure can. So mayor and council.
I didn't even know it.
As, as Mayor Harry would say, don't talk past the sale, you did great.
The money's, so.
It's approved.
The, the second one is the Plano Arts Association. And again, mayor and council, this goes back to an appeal from the, And again, mayor and council, this goes back to an appeal from the commission decision. It's $3,500. Again, I see a yes there. I see heads nodding. We will have the funding done. So thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may make one comment before we move on, just to recognize before these fine public servants on our committees leave, Chairman Harold Sickler. If I'm not mistaken, this is Harold's last year of his eight-year term on the Heritage Commission. He came onto the Heritage Commission with me, actually, in 2015, when we both came onto the Heritage Commission before I was on the council. He's had an exceptional tenure as chairman of the Heritage Commission, and I just wanted to thank you, Harold, for your service.
Okay, Karen.
Hey, we good.
You're up.
Okay, let's continue. We're going to talk about revenues now. Your assessed property values ended up at $57.4 billion. Out of that, 4.7 was existing property value, 737 million was due to new growth. We have a wide range of exemptions that we do offer the citizens and our corporations here at the city of Plano. This will show you revenue savings this year from exemptions totaled $61.8 million. And on the 65 and over, they're saving $7.7 million, or nearly $2 million more than what was received last year. The average market value, now this is with the proposed rate, 41.76 cents. Anyway, at the market value, it's 1,885. Of course, we have a homestead value. Anyway, if you add in all the different taxing entities, the citizens of Plano at that average home value, which is actually the market value, the tax rate's 1.8681, or $8,716 for the year. That's with everybody together. I went over this slide the other night. Due to our existing property values growing and our new growth is starting to stop, the, we got 50% going to residential now and 50% is being paid for by commercial. Once again, tax exemptions and the tax freeze. A 20% homestead exemption this year totals savings of $422 in savings annually. If you are 65 or over or disabled, you receive a $40,000 exemption, which totals about $171 a year. And then for the tax freezes on the 65 and over, that's $332 a year. Do I have any questions regarding your assessed property value? Okay, we wanted to go back through, not go back through, just provide some clarification. We're not going to go back there again. Oh, my Lord, that was unbelievable. Okay. According to the comptroller, the total MNO rate plus the debt service rate and the unused increment rate, if applicable, gives the total voter approval tax rate. The formula is right down here. Voter approval tax rate equals no new revenue, maintenance of operation times 1.35. Your current debt rate goes on top of that, any unused increment. The way you do the calculation for the truth in taxation, you have software, and it provides you all kinds of different formulas. The formula that does not change that you have to fill out is the one that will give you the no new tax rate and the one that will give you the voter approval rate. After you get those done, you go down and there's all kinds of different things that you can go in and add, take away, or whatever you're going to do. It's a checkmark system. I provided a couple of examples here. If we had a voter approval, if we had pollution control, we could check that box, this section applies to us. If we had an emergency revenue rate, that would apply to us. If we were collecting sales tax to go towards property tax, we would check that box. At the end of the day, we go on down, we have the unused increment rate, and you check that box if you're going to use it. In my training and discussing this with the tax assessor up at the county, you do not have to use this box unless you're going to use it. This year, we chose to use it. That being said, your voter approval rate is the 43.55 cents. The no new revenue rate is 38.65 cents. And the other night, the proposed rate that was decided to put in this form is the 41.76 cents. So this is the form that is going to be published in the paper. Mr. Iselson, did I say anything wrong there?
I am trying not to complicate this, so I'm going to say, no, you did not.
Okay, very good. Any question?
Any questions regarding that explanation? All right.
Okay. Yeah. Let's talk about sales tax real quick. Okay. I know everybody knows in here our sales tax cap policy. We do an average of three years. And then this last year, we have decided to add on an inflationary factor of 6%. Your sales tax for the reestimate is $114.5 million. That's what we're hoping comes in for this year. We're lacking two months. We did come in lower this last month, however, one of the reasons we were lower this month is because last year at this time, we had a positive audit adjustment. So we should be on track for that $114 million. When you do the three-year average, you divide it by three, add in your inflation. For next year, we have $110.7 million we're projecting. Just a couple of things to know. Last year, of course, this was after COVID. Sales tax really went on a trail up there. So last year, we ended up at 17.1% over the prior year. This was coming out of COVID. It has definitely gone back down. We're estimating we should be 5% over this year. It's something to always keep in mind, the majority of your sales tax is coming in from non-retail. Retail accounts for 35%. And of course, that's where we're going to go, the malls, or we're going to go to Target. Your business-to-business or non-retail accounts for 65% of the sales tax coming in. This is a look at your major retail industries. The number one, one is general merchandise stores, and number two is non-store retailers, meaning like the Amazons, okay? Number three on here is food and beverage stores, and number four is electronics. On your non-retail side, for this year, you got professional and other services, telecom and information services, and number three this year is hotel and food services or restaurants. Then number four is wholesale and other related. We do have a very nice sales tax per capita amount. It has gone from $372 up to $391.86. I just wanted to throw this out. I really thought this would go down. During COVID, our liquor, wine, and all that went way up. Well, hold on. This is, this is really something to think about. Since then, though, all your cities around you have had elections and have built liquor stores. Specs has gone in, Total Wine, and McKinney, they got all kinds of stuff. And it has not gone down. That to me, I just can't believe it. I really thought it'd go down.
So you're saying that the competition should have brought those down?
Yes, that is what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I swear to God, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Okay. And of course, factors impacting sales taxes, competition from surrounding cities, economic conditions, any movement of big businesses, which we monitor, out of the city, your business versus retail, audit adjustments, that's always a big one, the back-to-school sales tax holiday. And then, of course, we do have our policy that limits us to the three-year average, which has worked out very, very well, especially during like the economic downturn or when COVID hit. It really helped us out financially. Okay, any questions on sales tax? Yay, we're moving right along.
Thank you, mayor. We will be in just a second, I promise.
We've been a roadblock.
Sorry. I'll try not to be a roadblock. So Karen, that reestimated sales tax number was 114.5 million for the sales tax. Could you remind me, prior to the reestimate, what was the budgeted number for this past year for, for sales tax? Or, sorry, I didn't mean that to be a memory test if, so the, the budgeted number for the, for the '22, '23 budget for sales tax?
You'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, what's our original budget number? I want to say it's like 110?
It was 114. I'm sorry, 110, 110.
110.
110.7 million.
Perfect, thank you, 110.7 million.
Yeah, so what he was asking, what's our original budgeted number? That was 110. Hopefully, we're going to come in at 114.
And so then, just to follow up on that, so if we do hit the 114.5 reestimate, that would result in the sales tax surplus of 3.8 million that we would be looking at, I guess in October?
Yes, in October.
Perfect, perfect.
As soon as the fiscal year ends and accounting closes out the books, we will come back to you like this last year. We collected 2 million over what was reestimated, and y'all decided at that point to put that 2 million into the rainy day fund, okay? Some years, you've put it into capital maintenance. Some years, you've allocated for one-time expenditures. Some years, you've had it go to economic development. So we will come back in October with that number.
Karen, correction, for '22, '23, 100.6 million was the original budget.
100.6 million? So we're looking at potentially, and thank you for that, Casey, so we're looking at a 14 million, potentially $14 million sales tax surplus coming back.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, wait, all right.
Oh, it's our, it's our, so that's baked in. So when we reestimate that, we're not just using that in the three-year rolling average, we're spending that money already, okay, in the budget? So, so what will come back to us in October now is anything over the reestimate, not over last year's budget?
It's got to be over that 114 when we come back.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
You scare me, Anthony.
Well, I thought that number was bigger than usual, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Let's go on to water and sewer.
Okay, very good. Okay, we got final numbers in from North Texas Municipal Water District. Our water year ended on July 31st. We ended up using 21.534 billion gallons of water. At the end of the day, they did send us a letter when we first met with y'all a couple of weeks ago. The letter dated July, June 30th, had an 11% increase, and we were going to go to $3.77 per thousand gallons. The new one that came in is a 9% increase, or $3.69 per thousand gallons. But here's the deal. I was hoping we were going to save some money. That didn't happen. At the end of the day, they moved a water transmission facility line that looks to me, it was up there included in the water park, moved it down to a separate item, and that totals $1.7 million. So when I went in to redo all the rates, we really didn't save that much money. So at the end of the day, we are sticking with our pass-through water rate of 6%, okay? On the water side. On the wastewater side, nothing really changed on wastewater. We're going with a 3%, even though the district's going up like 10%. We're going with 3. At the end of all this, what we have is we're going to end, when I first talked to y'all a couple of weeks ago, 79 days of working capital. Now we have 80 days of working capital. So we're passing through a 6% water, 3% on wastewater. And we have spoken to the finance department. The utility system we used to have, you had to pass through the rates November 1st. Now we can pass them through October 1st. So these are going to go into effect October 1st. Just a couple other slides to show you. This is the member city water rate, the historical from North Texas Municipal Water District. This is a slide that looks all over the page, but at the end of the day, that blue line represents our take-or-pay minimum that we have to come to. So the current year, the year we're in, is 25.7 billion. Our new take-or-pay is 25.1 billion. We have the cost of undelivered water is 10.6 million, and the actual gallons we're using is 21.8, I mean, 21.5. So that's what this chart does. What does all this mean to the average customer? We consider the 5,000-gallon water to be like our senior rate, okay? So if an individual uses 5,000 gallons of water, 5,000 on the wastewater side, they will see an increase of 4.2% or $3.24 a month. An average water user at the 10,000 water, 5,000 for wastewater, will see an average increase of $4.48. The people that are watering their lawns a lot, using a lot of water at 30,000 gallons of water, 5,000 of wastewater, will see an $11.89 rate increase per month, or 5%. Commercial, 50,000 gallons water at a two-inch meter, 50,000 at wastewater is $44.44, or a 4.6% increase. So these increases are a lot smaller than the original 11%, 9% that the district was passing on. Any questions regarding the new rates? And that's just a look at your final fund summary at the 80 days. Do I have any questions regarding water and sewer?
Mayor and council, I'd just remind you that we have four more years in the glide path to get to the five-year rolling average. We continue to see our take-or-pay get reduced nominally each year, but it is heading in the right trajectory. I like to call that the Iselson Depression, working, working its way down in a positive way. But I think it's very important that we recognize that water costs are going up. The growth of the region is demanding additional water resources. They're going to be nothing but more expensive in the future. So the trajectory of water rates is going to continue to increase. It's going to, it truly is our most precious resource for the growth of the area. So just don't want anybody to be surprised that we continue to see that trajectory. And with that, I'll kick it back to Karen.
Okay, are we good? Okay, let's talk about solid waste. As you know, the last couple of years, the Solid Waste Fund has been struggling. They have been hit. The cost of equipment has tripled, quadrupled. The cost of fuel has done the same thing. We have ran into inflationary issues, personnel costs. Anyway, we have a financial policy that states we're supposed to have 15 days of working capital. We've been running negative the last couple of years. The last time we had a positive fund balance that met our financial policies was back in 2021. At the end of the day, we decided to hire in a rate consultant, plus they did a full five-year cost of service plan for us. And you're about to hear from them, his name is Matthew Garrett. He works for NewGen. In addition, budget, finance, and public works, we've all worked on this plan. Abby's going to come up, and she's going to let you know what's been happening over in solid waste. Then we're going to get Matthew up to talk about the new rates. Come on up, Abby. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Abby Owens. I'm one of the assistant directors in public works, and I just ran to get my glasses, so I'm catching my breath, so. I was here with you guys last year on a beautiful Saturday and just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that we talked about last year to prompt why we brought in the consultant for our study. Our rate history increase is in front of you there. We've really kind of held our rate relatively low and constant for a while. Last year, we asked for $2.50, and the goal was to get us to zero working days. Unfortunately, due to what Karen mentioned, in solid waste, we have three pretty consistent costs that continue to increase. It's equipment, it's personnel to drive the equipment and complete the services, and the tipping costs for actually taking our garbage to the landfill. And so this year, based upon what we found through the study, we are recommending a $4 increase to the 95-gallon cart with a proportional increase. It's about a 20% rate increase for the 68-gallon and the extra cart as well. cart as well. Our equipment impacts, this is a familiar slide from last year. We were actually able to secure consistent pricing for 22, 23, and 23, 24. And so when we purchased our side-loaders and rear-loaders and placed those orders, we've been able to hold that one constant. The inklings we're getting for when we place our next orders for the future years is going to be at least probably 10% of an increase, so that's concerning. Also, our grapple truck, we purchased one last year, and the one that we've purchased this year has continued to increase. It's now almost $300,000 for this vehicle. The grapple trucks are used for paid collections and bulky collections. So this was our solid waste fund balance breakdown that I showed you all last year. Back in 2015, 16, we had wonderful working capital. We were up to 72 and 77 working days. Also, remember that our cost per day to operate was lower as well. Last year, the audited balance had us finishing at negative $586,000, which is less than zero working days. And then this year, at our reestimate, it's going to be at 719, but that includes a $2.5 million loan from the Water and Sewer Fund. And then the rate increase that we're proposing of $4 will bring us back to, hopefully, if we can continue at the rate we're going with our estimates, we'll be at about $900,000 positive to end next fiscal year. This does include repayment of the Water and Sewer Loan Fund that we received back over the next five years? Okay, five years. So we just kind of want to highlight these for you all to just show you that working balance has continued to go down, and we've continued to see that happen. And last year was really what kind of pushed us over the edge. So I wanted to go ahead and then introduce Matthew Garrett with NewGen Strategies, so that he can walk you all through the findings of our study.
Thank you, Abby. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Garrett with NewGen Strategies and Solutions, office just across the way here in Richardson, but live in McKinney. Glad to be with you. Am I driving?
Yes. Just spring forward.
Wow, that's fancy.
And if you want the big...
Well done, well done. My apologies, I didn't get...
And then go there.
I was looking for a clicker. Fantastic. So a quick ditty about NewGen. We are about 50-plus employees across the nation. We do support utilities ranging from Hawaii to America Samoa. So it depends on how you look at a map, but by and large, we're a very Texas-centric firm. We do have a solid waste, a water wastewater practice, electric, and actually help in the general fund as needed. Purpose of this study, formatting is a little off, my apologies, is to conduct a comprehensive study relative to solid waste and recycling program here at the city of Plano. The second, obviously, is we have to ensure the long-term viability. You saw your working capital days go down. That's not the trajectory you'd prefer, and certainly, as Karen said, you have a policy that would dictate otherwise. So we want to get back in the black with this rate increase. Additionally, we do provide a five-year rate forecast. And then at the end, your staff will actually get our working model as a tool. So that's what that means, as the financial planning tool goes. Generally, this chart is bleak in that the light blue line covers your residential revenues, and the dark blue line is your cost. And again, I have to apologize, something got lost in transmission here. Hopefully, your printed packet looks correct.
Yeah, I was going to say, y'all need to go by what's in your packet, or the packet we sent you out electronically. We came and reviewed this earlier today, and none of, it wasn't messed up like this, so I don't know what's happened. Just watch y'all.
We have a project to improve the technology.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, Matt.
No, no, no worries at all.
They do have a packet that's showing them, so...
Fantastic. As long as you see the right numbers, I will read from the screen, and I don't like to read to you anyways, but I do want to make sure you have the right information as we talk about this this evening. So, along the forecast, we do have the additions of fleet. So we have three ASLs over three years and two rear-loaders. So you'll see a little bit of an increase ramping up 25, 26, and 27. So that accounts for the dark blue line trending up. Our methodology really is to develop the test year. That's using some historical basis, and then using sort of known and measurable changes into the future. The revenue requirement effectively is algebra, right? We take all of your cost, we take some revenue offsets. That leaves us with the net amount that we need to make up through our rates. Tonight, we're really focusing on your residential rate, as Abby already alluded to. We did allocate your cost to various categories and cost of service, and then ultimately have a resolve of a rate. So what's baked in the cake for a revenue requirement? Really, that's your O and M. The vehicle replacement cost and your capital improvement projects. So, a lot of heavy equipment out there. 50-plus employees doing the work, a lot of routes. So you've got a lot of people and a lot of equipment. So the fixed cost nature of this utility requires substantial reinvestment over time. So the rate recommendations, as already stated by Abby, is to move forward with a $4 increase in fiscal '24 on the residential rate. You'll see that has a similar effect, but not quite $4 on the other two cart types. Then we have this metered approach where we have a dollar per year, which is subject to change, of course, as needs change. But that's what we would have in our forecast today with known assumptions. That includes the North Texas cost and some others. Any questions on the rates themselves? Fantastic. So the full cost of service really dug below the surface. We got down and we looked at 19 and a half employees doing residential trash. We saw, you know, 18 doing the yard waste. So all of those cost components and the equipment related to that are baked into these underlying figures. So this chart, actually to the credit of staff, was their recommendation, really breaks down your fee or your residential rate per month into the various services you provide. That's important, because your residents compare themselves to other cities. Not all other cities offer all of these services.
When you push the button, it'll come up.
Did I miss something? We're good?
No, we're just talking.
Okay, fair enough.
Your mic's on, Karen.
If you push the button, your 2360 will come up. That's what we were talking about.
Ah, fair enough. Thank you, thank you. I can push buttons. There you go.
There you go. That's what he was asking.
No applause.
Yeah, yeah.
No applause required. So again, this is the crux of our cost-of-service analysis. We spend a lot of time with your staff outlining who does what, assigning people in partial positions. That's why we have fractions of full-time equivalents. So kudos to Abby and Ryan for sure, and then Dylan in Budget, who really spent a lot of time on this with us. Any questions about the underlying analysis with this net resolve rate of 2360? Okay, fantastic. So the rate plan, as you see, doesn't actually always keep our line above costs. So that light green line is your series relative to revenues, the dark green are expenses. Again, that large increase we called out on this slide does talk about the big changes to fleet. But because we have two years before our model would even show an under-recovery, a lot can change in that time. And so this dollar per year, we think is more than adequate. Additionally, we have something in our industry called rate gradualism. And so we think that if this works over a five-year period, smoothing out impacts to your residents, it may be more palatable. So, of course, subject to change by you and future councils, but that's the trajectory that we would show from our analysis today. All right, so residential bill comparison. A big disclaimer on every comparison, we do this in water and wastewater. We do it on any other service you offer. Not all services are alike. That said, these are the rates that your residents may compare you to. And so you'll see that your current position at 1960, bottom quartile, this proposed rate puts you in about the middle of the pack. Additionally, there are a couple notes. Hopefully, those are big enough to see. Don't want to misstate another city's rates. We do have information Ryan gathered from other cities relative to what they're proposing. So you'll see that's true of McKinney and Richardson, as they've posted it on their 24 projections at this point. All right, so next steps really are to look at these cost-of-service-based rates. Of course, Council will take action on whatever rate they see necessary for '24. Ultimately, we think you should look at this every year, and that's why we have a tool we're going to equip your budget team with to do just that. As other things come up, task two here, the big step is to look at other areas. I said, we focus on residential, obviously our biggest customer type. You have some other things at play relative to compost and food waste programs that the Council will probably be looking at in the near future. As those come up, they may warrant adjustment to the cost of service as we've produced today. So with that, and hearing no questions, I'd be glad to field any now.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to remind you that our Environmental Waste Services Fund is an enterprise fund, so we have this fund self-supporting through those rates. So while I understand there's some elements about rate increases and things of that nature, for us, it's important that we get back to our financial policies and we get this on solid ground. Having y'all all live here and know this very well, our trash collection is a very important service, and making sure that it's done and done correctly and that the equipment works is incredibly important. And while we'll get to salary discussions later, this has been one of the areas that we've had to work on over the last couple of years to ensure that we are adequately resourced to make sure that we can provide this utility. So just wanted to remind you all of that.
Thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. So our next item is program changes, correct? All right. Compensation Plan. Ms. Ross.
Good evening, Mayor Muntz, City Council members, Mr. Kinselman, Ms. Mims. I'm LaShawn Ross, Deputy City Manager for the city of Plano. I also serve in the role of HR Director right now, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. I guess it would be helpful, Karen, I thought you were about to come over here and tell me to change these slides. Want to talk to you tonight, just give you an overview, some details, some context about the city's compensation plans and how we manage compensation, what's kind of happening with that right now, and also talk to you about our health plan and give you an update on that. You'll see that I put some just additional notes underneath. Stewardship and Effective Management of Financial and Relational Transition. It feels like we are in fairly constant transition over the past several years. And I want to assure you that we understand how to manage transition, speaking for all of my colleagues, speaking for what we've done in this city for a very long time in terms of the culture and the policies and processes that we use. When we talk about stewardship at the city of Plano, we take it very seriously. So I want to speak again for us. I want to give you not just the details for tonight. I want to not just only talk to you about the facts and data analysis for compensation and health plans, but I want to talk to you about how that fits into our organization, how that works for our employees, how we compare when we talk to other cities, other municipalities, other organizations, to again, let you know, and I'm sure you already do, but to reinforce the fact that we are attentive to this all the time. We understand that there's a return on investment for the competitive pay that you all allow us to have when you give us the funding to take care of that. The fact that we have comprehensive benefits is something that not only allows us to compete with other organizations, both private and public, but it also allows us to reinforce the value that's placed on understanding that it takes every one of the city of Plano employees that are here to be able to make this organization run as well as it does and to make this city run as effectively as it does. So we talk a lot about what is the why? What's the why for everything, everything that we do? What is the city of Plano's why? Well, when we talk about compensation and we talk about benefits, that why is what you see on the screen. It's about how are we structuring this to make sure that we can recruit, we can retain, we can help employees to want to stay here. We talk about this a lot with our new hires, when we talk in new hire orientation, to help people understand that we understand that people have a choice. They don't have to come to the work, to work for the city of Plano, but many choose to. And what we find over a number of years, and certainly in recent months, is that probably 86% or so of the people that we see coming to our organization as new employees, some of them are return employees, and I think that that speaks well of the city, but many have never worked in local government. Our city manager comes by and visits with them and asks, "Where are you coming from? Have you worked in local government before?" By and large, they never have. But people have a perception that there is some stability in local government, that there are growth opportunities, that there is an opportunity to serve. And so when we talk about what is the why for talking about compensation and benefits, it's because it's part of the total package. Yes, we want to serve. Yes, we want to be here. Yes, we are career-oriented, but we also want to be valued. We want to be treated well as employees. The city wants to do that, wants to provide that for its employees, and allows us to have the environment that you see represented on the, on the screen here. When we talk about the current climate in Plano, I think it's important to bring us up to date, because we've come through some difficult years very recently. We've had a lot of change. We've had a lot of transition. But there's been something about the fact that the city of Plano has planned and functioned very well for many years. And so it's helped us to continue to stand in this particular climate. But to give you an idea of kind of where we are, city employees are collaboratively transitioning, working together, not just internally, but also with some of our external partners, through recruitment, retention, and service challenges that we've seen over the past four years or so. Yes, there have been some challenges. Some of them have been challenges that we've not known or experienced before, but we are continuing to do what we have always done and working really well to be able to manage that transition. Customer service excellence, consistent delivery of quality of services, that's our priority. That's what I, that's what we do. That doesn't change. So regardless of what's going on in the environment around us, we are delivering the services to our citizens in Plano, and we are continuing to deliver them really well. Not, not that it's not a challenge sometimes, as we do that through transition, but we continue to do it really well. Strategic planning is a mainstay within our departments. Employees complete today's task, and not only are we doing that, we are also thinking about what does this look like in the future? What do we need to be thinking about? Just as you all are doing in your capacity, we are doing the same thing every day. And again, on behalf of all of us, I want to say to you all that we're thinking about it all the time. And so by the time you tell us about, "Hey, we need you to think about this", we appreciate it and we accept it, and we are going to march right down that road, but we want you to know that we're already thinking about it, that we are always being strategic, because that is what we're trained to do. We are not the city of excellence just because. We're the city of excellence because our forefathers have taught us how to plan and how to be successful, and we're continuing that. So we want you to be assured that every day that we are in our seats in these positions, that's what we're doing. An average of 14 in-person classes, 34 virtual classes are offered monthly for employee development. We do an amazing job of internal training and development, personal and professional development. That's ongoing all the time, and people come to the classes, not just to get away from the jobs, but to come and learn so that we can go back and do our jobs even better. Recruitment strategies continue to evolve through collaborations with communications and community outreach. We're working so much more with our communications department because we want to really leverage the expertise to be able to know, how should we get the word out there? Yes, it's a challenging recruitment market right now. So how are we, are there other opportunities that we can use? And I'm really happy to say that we've had some successful outcomes in working with our communications department and HR, and we really appreciate them for that. Multiple departments are managing a growing community investment program to enhance infrastructure integrity and quality of life in our organization. You all heard earlier, I guess on Monday, at Monday's meeting, where we were talking about the CIP program. It continues to grow significantly. And so when we talk to our Public Works Department, our Parks and Recreation Department, our Engineering Department, our Finance Department, our Budget Department, all of these departments are working hard to continue to manage the growth. And sometimes, it's not so obvious that it's a challenge, because we continue to do it well. And staff just picks up and does it, and we get the, the resources that we need somehow, but it can be a challenge. But we're really happy to say that we continue to do it well. We accept the challenge. We're getting it done. We make the ask, and hopefully we get the things that we need to move forward. Budget and Finance Departments continue leading the way for financially responsible decision-making. We all know that we're AAA bond-rated, have been for some time. It doesn't happen just by chance. And I know that you all know that, but I think it's really important for us to say that. We were talking recently, we have committees that oversee our 115 trust, which takes a good, close look at our health plan management, not only for our current employees, but also for retirees. We have a 457 steering committee for our deferred compensation. We have all of these things that are in place. We have the Retiree Security Plan Committees. I bring this up to say that in addition to Budget and Finance doing amazing work to keep us AAA bond-rated and us having great city management and great leadership at the council level, we are taking very seriously our fiduciary responsibility as stewards of funding and, and all of the financial responsibilities that are given to us. And really proud to say that our 115 trust and our retirement security plan are fully funded. And there are many, if you look out over many municipalities and probably many organizations... And there are many, if you look out over many municipalities and probably many organizations, when you talk about OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, not every organization has had the forethought to be strategic, to put systems in place, to have a financial plan to take care of those retiree benefits. And happy to let you know that the City of Plano has done that and continues to work on that. Plano continues to attract residential and commercial residents. We continue to see the great work. You all are seeing economic development and the things that are coming forth. We've had great things in place for many years, but we're having to transition. The landscape, the environment continues to be different. It's this municipal structure that we have, the number of employees, that we have, the departments and how they're laid out, those job titles. Just a reminder here that it's these departments, these positions, these jobs that get it done every day. We get a lot of work done with these employees, with these numbers. And I think it's really about the principled decision-making that we undertake every day, whether it's the five-element fiscal framework that our city manager puts before you and us all the time and reminds us all the time of the importance of adhering to the financial policies and paying attention to our infrastructure. How do we maintain it? How do we take care of it? How do we build? How do we take care of our people, both employees and our citizens? Programs and services affordability? We are thinking about this all the time. I put this up here to say that when we talk about principled decision-making, a lot of this is because we have the philosophy to guide us so that when we're making decisions, there's always something for us to go back to in terms of why we made that decision, why are we discussing this. I won't go into these in detail, but just want you to think about the fact that when we're talking about infrastructure, many times we're talking about the infrastructure out in our community, but we also have that policy-driven infrastructure internally that drives our decisions and allows us to make principled decisions that we can always come back to. A bit of research in what is being said, and this is from an article from American City and County, I want to say, within the past 14 months. Looking ahead, governments rank the offering of a competitive compensation package as their highest priority, with an additional 41% indicating an intent to perform a job classification study. This is what's being said out in the community, in the industry, across our nation. Again, I want you to know that we're doing this and have been doing this for some time. And so we continue to look at compensation and benefits and try and update that on a regular basis. Why do we do that? There are some benefits to doing that. The City of Plano has a history of being very intentional about how it makes decisions so that it reflects an outcome-driven type of practice. The stewardship that we have, we practice that every day. And so what are some of the benefits of that? Then we have the annual compensation review to benchmark identified positions. We may not always go out and do a full-blown, because that's not necessary to do on an annual basis, but we will do that maybe every two to four years. But every year, throughout the year, we're working with other municipalities, other organizations to benchmark, how are we doing in terms of compensation? How are we doing in terms of benefits? It's an ongoing review. Currently conducting an assessment of the city's compensation philosophy, policies, and practices. We're undertaking this initiative, and I know that you all have already heard about it. We've talked about it throughout this budget process, but it's because, now, here we are in 2023. Our policies, our compensation philosophies have worked for us for a very long time. But should they be something different now? We don't know. We're going to take a look and see. We've already begun this process, and it's just part, again, of our due diligence, our strategic thinking, our being disciplined in how we make decisions. So that will be forthcoming over the next probably three to four months. We're partnering with Communications and Community Outreach, again, to improve our messaging regarding total compensation. One thing that we talk about when we talk about accountability, it's not just from the perspective of the City of Plano being responsible to us as employees, but also how are we managing that information? So when we talk about total compensation, it's about so much more than what does that offer? And what do I get paid just in pay? We're not saying that that's not important. We're saying that there's more to the story. So we look at total compensation. So we'll be working with Communications to, again, talk about how do we craft messaging around helping all of us as employees to truly understand what our total compensation is? We use annual total compensation statements, but we need to talk about it a little bit more. We are really fortunate to have a lot of benefits. We want to make sure that people understand what they are and how to access them and how to navigate that process. We're regularly collecting and analyzing compensation and health data, as I said before, focusing on employee communication, engagement, communication with employees, having them to come in and be open about asking for information when they want to do that, prioritizing physical and emotional wellness through our education programs and incentives. It's just important, and there's a couple of slides going forward, that we really address the total person, the whole person, when we come into this organization as public servants. Balancing benefit levels, cost, and financial risk to the city. This is to just reinforce to you that it's not just about us trying to give, 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 and take everything in terms of resources that we can then go back and distribute to employees. It is about us looking at the market, determining what is it that we should be giving? How is it that we show value to employees and remain competitive as an employer? But how do we manage that? How do we make sure that we are analyzing the financial risk for the organization? What should we do? When should we do it? So again, we're being very disciplined in our approach. And partnering with technology solutions to maximize efficiency through appropriate technology, we want to be measured in how we use technology to make sure that we're being more efficient and more effective and being good stewards of our processes. When we go out and do the market studies, just want to give you a glimpse of this, and I think that I shared this with you last year, about what our comparators are. How do we compare and who do we look at when we're comparing compensation and when we're looking at benefits? And these are those comparator cities. You'll see that civil service fire and civil service police looks a little bit different than the general pay plan and the public safety communications pay plan, and that is because we engage with police and fire to make sure that we're getting their input as well on specifics about how other departments are running, how they look as compared to us, and how well we align. And so we're very much engaged with them. Now, for all of the non-civil service people who are listening right now and thinking, well, LaShawn, so why don't we get to do that? We are taking in information all the time to make sure that we are comparing appropriately. Our city manager has given us the go-ahead recently that we're really going to put this on a timeline of about every 10 years to make sure that we are going in and ensuring that we are still comparing appropriately. And that is also what we're talking about with our compensation philosophy. We will begin that next year to make sure that we still have what we need. When we talk about the landscape of employment costs, what is it really costing employers in the City of Plano? If you look at some information about what we think will be happening in some of our comparator cities, it looks like, from the information that we received, that there will be pay increases somewhere between 3% and 6%. That's what's being projected to us. When we look at benefit costs of employee premium comparisons, it looks like there's anywhere from about $30 per month to $146 per month in terms of employee premium in our comparator cities, and Plano is included in that. The highest portions of total compensation, and this is through the Bureau of Labor Statistics for employers, it is 6.9% on health insurance. That's a rising cost. It continues to rise. Social Security and Medicare, the City of Plano does not participate in Social Security, but about 6%. And vacation time being used, about 3.8%. When we talk about how we share total compensation and how we compare to other cities, one of the things that we want to do a better job about sharing with potential employees is that we don't participate. The City of Plano does not participate in Social Security, so that is not a contribution that will come out of employees' paychecks. However, the City of Plano does provide the retirement security plan at no cost to employees. So we have to be able to tell these stories a little bit better because I might go running someplace else saying, oh, my gosh, I got an 8% pay increase. That's going to be really great. Not that it's not great, but if that organization participates in Social Security, I might be a little shocked when I get my first paycheck if I haven't asked all the questions. So we are working to do better with that. We have put some information on our manager resource site where employees can go in and work with people that they're making job offers to and sort of scale out some of these things, but we want to do it a bit better. Employers are continuing to invest in compensation to combat prolonged tight labor markets, but they're doing this with more prudence than what was seen in 2022. This is a statistic from Mercer. And I included this for you all because, again, it's great that we're being prudent, and I feel like we always are at the City of Plano. Just wanted to say that we were already, I think, being very prudent, not to say that our neighbors were not, but we did not have as substantial a jump to get there because we already had processes and patterns in place as we entered into this tighter job market. So invest in areas that boost employee recruitment and retention. This is what the research says, and this is what Plano is doing. Compensation and benefits? Check. We're doing that. Employee health, wellness, and morale? Doing that. Professional development and succession planning? Not only do we do a great job with professional development on multiple levels, but we are going back and looking at our succession planning initiatives and look forward to doing a lot more with that in the coming months and first quarter of 2024. And leadership development? We have to have leaders. We have to have people that understand how to make all of this work, and we have to support people in doing that. We recently worked with a cross-section of employees, did some focus groups, and did a lot of research, and they told us, this is what we need as supervisors. We need to have this information upfront. We don't want to learn this by trial and error. And so we have done a lot of work in that area, and it's going really well, and we will continue to do that to make sure that we are equipping and supporting employees to do the jobs that we are here to do. Again, Plano values the whole person, and we practice this every day. Job satisfaction is not just about the compensation. It's not to say that compensation is not important. It is, but it's not just the compensation. I was looking at some statistics recently that talked about the fact that employees are leaving local government specifically. I take that back. I think it was public sector, which would include local government, for these reasons, because of work-life balance, because of morale, and because of compensation. And I am a believer that, yes, we may go and we may get more compensation sometimes, but sometimes that's not the primary reason that we start to look. So we keep all of these things in mind, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of the whole person in all of these ways that are shown on the slide right now. So how does Plano maintain its competitive advantage? It does all of these things that I've talked to you about. Commitment to regular review and management of its compensation and benefits plans, the culture that we create, how we value employees, how we engage employees, and we do the kinds of things that we're doing right now, engaging with you, our decision-makers, and having a conversation about what's important and how do we get to the goals that we're looking for. The budget allocations that support employee recruitment, retention, and development are in place in Plano, one of the ways that we keep our competitive advantage. Attentiveness to organizational culture that defines and reinforces excellence as a required deliverable to our community. And then the dedication of resources that equips and supports employees with what they need to do, which is what we appreciate about our council and city management and that you all give us the things that we need to get our jobs done. Service demands, accountability, environment, all of these things are very important to us being able to get the jobs done. As I'm coming up to completing this discussion with you, I wanted to give you some perspective also on some of the challenges of healthcare, so many that we can't really control for, but we look for those, and we spend a lot of time in meetings with our health plan consultants and our Budget and Finance Departments and HR, looking for ways to accomplish this. One of the things, when we talk about our healthcare philosophy, our health plan philosophy, we think it's very important that, at the City of Plano, that we not just provide healthcare, but that it's accessible, that it's affordable, that it's comprehensive, that it is truly a benefit. And so it's not just about the numbers. We could make it just about the numbers, and we can balance them any way that we need to, but it's not just about the numbers. It's about the numbers and the cost and the healthcare environment that has a lot of things that we can't control for. And then it's also about how does this help the quality of life for employees and retirees and their families? So just to look at this, if you look at 2018 through 2023, you can see that. Now, if you start calculating these numbers, you might say, well, Shawn, this doesn't add up to that total health cost. No, it doesn't, because many times the total health cost for the year exceeded what the contributions were from the employees and from the employer. This also does not include our retiree population. However, it gives you a glimpse into the cost patterns for healthcare and how expensive it is and how it continues to grow. And it's a very comprehensive task of looking at numbers and understanding patterns and looking at trends, and we're doing this all the time. Again, I want to assure you that these are really big numbers, but we also have all of those employees that I showed you on the slide before and retirees to take care of, and this is the cost of healthcare, and it's a very important part of our benefits package. But these are the numbers that we're looking at. I also put this in this way because I want our employees as well to understand that, yes, we talk about having to raise contributions, not every year, but we've talked about it the last couple of years. But when we look at the total cost and when we look at what's being asked of us as participants in the plan, I think it's a fair trade here. So these are the numbers. This is what it's looking like for our healthcare costs right now. We are also seeing, over the past two to three years, that our large claimants are growing. So when we look at those claims that are $50,000, $125,000 or more, they're growing. And so a lot of that accounts for where we are now. But we're also continuing to take steps to figure out ways to design our plans so that we can manage that. When you look at this chart that's on the screen here, we are talking about, as we did last year, and it was about a $4 increase for employees last year, we are talking about an increase this year as well, projected. We are asking to increase that. If you look at the monthly amount for the employees from $62 to $71.30, ends up being just over $9 per month. You look also, the employer amount is increasing as well, and the employer amount also increased last year. And so, yes, some of these are... Uh-oh. Did I?
We're just saying, what a value.
Yes, it is value. And again, one of the things that I recall us doing many years ago, we talked, the city talked about, how are we subsidizing? How are we sharing in the cost with employees and dependents? And at that time, and this was many years ago, at that time, everyone was getting the same kind of share. And we had a philosophical conversation about who is our primary? Who is the city's primary responsibility? And it was determined at that time that it's the employee. That's who we have the employment arrangement with. Doesn't mean that the city isn't going to also try and help take care of that employee's family because that is a quality-of-life issue. That's a morale issue that we talked about before. But we have to find that way to make it work in terms of the cost share. So you'll see that there's a 90-10 split for employees and the city and a 75-25 for dependents. The health plan outlook for 2024 and beyond, we're looking at plan design changes for next year. We look for ways to not just try and create additional contributions just through premiums. We look at utilization. We look at trends. We look at the opportunity to contract with different organizations. And so we've had a successful year working with our consultant, our health plan consultant, Brown &amp; Brown, who's helping us to go out and make those connections. And so we'll be talking about some of those changes going forward. We want to give more options for the users of the plan so that if I use more healthcare, maybe I can access in a different way if I have other options and still have less out-of-pocket costs. So some of the things that we're looking at, you see, we've already talked about the increases. To increase the maximum out-of-pocket from $6,600 to $7,000 with no maximum to the city, I'm making that point because we could go to an IRS maximum out-of-pocket, which was, I think, for 2024 would be like $9,300.
$9,400.
Yeah, $9,400. We talked about that, and while it could make sense that we do that, and it's still substantially smaller than what a claim could be, it was determined that we're not going to go there in that manner right now. And for anybody who's listening, I'm not saying, if anybody heard me say, well, she said not now, so I guess it's going to happen next year, not what I said. I'm saying that that is something that we must continue to consider in terms of plan design. For us, again, our culture is not just about cost shifting. It's about what makes sense and how do we make sure that we retain the integrity of a plan that allows access for all of us? We continue to look at how much of an employee's salary We continue to look at how much of a of an employee's salary is is required, how, what percentage is the healthcare of the salary? And we're never above 5% for the employee. But that's important to us. We don't take these decisions lightly, but we will be changing the increase of the annual maximum out-of-pocket from 6,600 to 7,000. I put that, I, I think it's so important to 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 really talk about that caveat of the no maximum for the city, that while, yes, it's projected to be raised for us as users of the plan to $7,000, my annual out-of-pocket maximum then is maxed at 7,000. I'm not going to pay anything else for the rest of the year. The city, on the other hand, the health fund, there is no maximum. So again, I think that is kind of a fair trade. Expand imaging benefits. We're looking at contracting with a company that will allow us to go in and and have certain imaging benefits. If we use these particular providers, there will be no out-of-pocket costs for employees. Now, that's going to mean that we need to educate a little bit more. We, as consumers, need to make sure that we understand the plan so that we know how to use it to our benefit, to get the care that we need, and also to minimize out-of-pocket costs, but that will be a significant difference. We will still have the plan as it is right now. People could still choose to use it as it exists, but there would be, there will be a different option, that I can also use these particular imaging organizations and providers and have no out-of-pocket as a participant in the plan. Expand benefits for surgery and cancer care to a center of excellence that offers bundled, competitive pricing. Again, these are plan design changes that we think can be very beneficial for the participants in our plan. We're increasing the dental premiums. It's approximately $2 per month, as I was looking at the projections again over the last couple of days, I think it's closer to $1, but not more than $2. And this will also increase the annual benefit, the annual dental benefit from $2,500 per year to $3,000 per year. It's been 2,500 for years. Increase the annual vision benefit for frames and contact lenses from 150 to 180. There will be no premium change, and I also need to point out that the vision is completely voluntary, so people will will use that if they'd like. We're completing planning and negotiations with one of our local hospitals to have a, it's called a narrow network, and hopefully, if we can get that done, that's going to be a significant plan design change. And I think that many of our employees who use this facility already will be very pleased about that when we can get the contract done and get the education out. And then continuing to enhance the wellness program with education and prevention and all of that. When it comes down to our strategic vision and how all of these things fit in, want you to know that the same things that we're doing with the city as an organization, the multi-year fiscal roadmap project, we are trying to make sure that we're following that as well with our health plan and our compensation management. We look at our our served values, and we look at the plans that we have in place, the philosophies that we have in place. We look at the multi-year fiscal roadmap and how we're able, we're trying to move forward. And again, want to just assure you that this level of disciplined decision-making is being done at all levels in our organization. If you could visit any one of our departments on any given day regarding any project that's happening, this is the level of disciplined decision-making that's happening all the time. This is the kind of strategic discussion that's happening all the time, and we just want you to be assured of that. And this is why. Plano's Plano, that's why we're the city of excellence. And this, this statement down at the bottom, it's from Jim Collins, one of his writings, and and I've referred to it for many years, and I think about Plano when I see this, because I think this is what we do. Companies that enjoy enduring success have core values and a core purpose that remain fixed while their business strategies and practices endlessly adapt to a changing world. There have been things over the last few years, we've seen a lot of organizations having to really ramp up and do a lot of things differently, and we've not done that. We've not had to do that. Have we had to pay attention? Absolutely, we have. Have we had to do some things maybe a little bit differently? Absolutely, we have. Will we have to going forward? Probably so. But we've not had, we've not had to make wholesale changes because we have been making disciplined decisions all the time. Not saying that other people have not, saying though that we do all the time. And so that's our health plan, that's our compensation plan, that's what we do every day. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any, any questions or statements from the council to LaShawn? LaShawn, that was a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
And I, I think I can speak for the entire council. We realize that the employees make this a city of excellence, and we're very proud to to be a part of that in such a small way. But we want all of you to know, and all of, all of our employees to know, how important they are to us and to this community.
Thank you so much.
Our next item is the additional school resource officers regarding HB 3. Hello, Chief.
Hello, hello, Mayor, Council, and I think I must have made Karen angry to have me following LaShawn. That's a, it's really, that's really tough. But I am here to talk about House Bill 3. It is a security for the schools. By now, most of you probably know neither one of our school districts are asking for SROs. So the purpose of my meeting here is to let you know what our school districts are doing and how we plan to integrate those operations into how we do our operations out on the street. So we will start with talking about exactly what House Bill 3 required. So the legislature's clear intent was, or their preference anyway, was to put a sworn officer, a police officer or deputy on each campus. So neither one of our school districts was interested in starting their own police department. Their preference was to use school resource officers. And another option they could have done was to have off-duty officers work in a, in a off-duty employment role like we do across the city many times. Of course, SRO program being the preferred option, two, two problems with that. Number one is 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 money, and I, and I have a slide that will talk about the cost of that here in a minute. The other two is staffing. So in the, in the, in the, in the case of my schools having to come up with about 40 officers, and again, I'll show you that, that's almost 10%, about 10% of my workforce, and we're doing very well on hiring right now. I have 417 positions, I'm staffed at 413, I'm down less than 1%, and and I've got nine job offers out. So we're doing pretty good on staffing. But to increase my staffing to 40, that would take about at least three years for me to be able to do that, is what I would project. And by the way, for some of you who served on the previous council that authorized those over-hires, those are a big help. I talked to some of my staff, I talked to other people, and they said, Chief, well, if you're down below 417, the over-hires don't help you. But that's not true, because even though I'm down below 417 when I give a test, I can continue to give job offers out until I hit the 428, which is the 11 positions that I now have. I would not be able to do those over-hires, give out those job offers unless you give me the authorization to do the over-hire. So it helps, even though I'm below that 417. This next slide. So most of the school districts and police departments are in a similar boat. They can't hire enough officers to get this started in a timely manner. So the legislature allowed for an alternative standard. Districts can claim what's called a good cause exemption, and that's what every school district that I know is doing. And then that gave them the option of hiring a school marshal program, I'll talk about that here a little bit more in a minute, or a school guardian program, or they could go with armed private security. And what we see here in our county and surrounding areas are that most are going with a, either a school marshal program or the security guard option is what we are seeing in our schools, split that difference as well. So if we were, though, to put an SRO at all of our schools, that would mean an additional 41 SROs. We would also have to add additional supervisors because of the span of control. So that would be four sergeants and two lieutenants and additional vehicles as well. So within our city, we would have to cover down on 38 PISD schools. We have four Frisco elementary schools in our city. We have one elementary SRO that serves as a rover between those four schools, so we would need to hire an additional three. That would be 41 campuses, 41 additional officers that we would need to hire. This $12.6 million cost, that would be the total cost of our SRO program if we brought on those 41 additional officers. The additional cost for PISD for for their share of those officers would be right at about $8 million, and then for Frisco ISD, it'd be about 4.4, 4.5 million dollars. Exact cost varies because we we invoice the schools on the exact charges that we pay. Officers, tenured officers make more than than junior officers, so there's some pay, pay differentials there. And that would bring our total SRO program up to 67 SROs. So PISD elected to go with the school marshal program and and what that program consists of. You can see up there, it has to be a school district employee, they have to have a Texas license to carry already, they have to have what's called an L3, which is a psychological assessment, and they have to complete 80 hours of training and also undergo an additional 16 hours of training every year. So both the city manager and I, the deputy city manager, we've, we've met with PISD on two occasions to talk about this. In my opinion, this is the best route for them to go since we can't put SROs on their campus, and so I'm very, very comfortable for what they, for what they're doing. They have already got their job announcement out on the street. My recommendation was that they try to get as many retired police officers as they can to do this, but, you know, I don't know if the market's going to be able to support that, and a lot of it's going to have to do with the pay that they offer those guys. But but that's the program they're going to go with, and I did inform the superintendent that, to the extent that we can, we will, we will assist them with making sure their officers are qualified every year, and for sure, we want to integrate them into our active shooter, active threat training that we do every year. Oh, and also, the difference between the school marshal program and the school guardian program that you saw in the previous slide, school marshals and school guardians have to work for the school district. School guardians only receive 16 hours of training, and school guardians typically have other duties. You know, I worked out in West Texas, they had a lot of guardian programs out there. Usually, it's a coach or, you know, a principal or somebody, and they've got other duties they do, they've got a license to carry, they do those 16 hours, and they're ready to go. The school marshals are typically dedicated to just providing that security. So that's kind of the difference between those two programs. The school marshal program is actually run by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, which also runs our sworn, our, our program for commissioned sworn officers in the state as well. Versus the guardian program, the curriculum is designed by Texas DPS, our state police, and then they provide that to commercial service providers who train the guardians. Frisco's plan is to use a private security form, Level 3 private security, that means they can carry a firearm. Plano ISD was not comfortable with that. However, I am comfortable with what Frisco is doing in our city because they are going to continue the SRO rover program. And what that involves is, as I said, we have four Frisco schools in our city, we have one Plano police officer who goes, that's his full-time job, is to be at one of those schools throughout the school day, and so they're going to continue to do that with, even though they have this, these private security officers on campus. The other thing that we intend to continue to do is something we implemented last year, we called it our community security plan for our schools, is in the, at our PISD elementary schools, we have either the beat patrol officer or a neighborhood police officer visit each one of those schools twice a day, wants to do an exterior check, wants to do an interior check. The superintendent said that program is going well, and so we will certainly continue that program, at least in the immediate future. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Chief? Oh, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Chief, thank you. You noted that the over-hires help. Would that help us provide flexibility for PISD additional over-hires? Understanding the challenges they're going to have to fill all of these and the challenges we would have as well, if we have additional flexibility through more over-hires as they try to ramp up their staffing for PISD at the elementary schools?
Well, even if I were in that over-hire territory, so that would be between the 417 and the 428, we wouldn't be able to assist PISD with that because...
Well, I mean, beyond 428.
I'm sorry?
I, I mean, any additional over-hires beyond 428.
No, I mean, the, the primary reason I needed to over-hire is just because of our long training pipeline. So I've got 10, 11 now that I can hire, but typically, I have 25 to 45 officers in that training pipeline. That 10 helps a lot, quite frankly, obviously. It allows me to give out those job officer, offers, so I'm ready to go in October when we have our next academy. But it, it, I've, I've still got vacant positions within the police department with no name on it. And where are those people at? They're in training, because they're training for 50 to 52 weeks.
A long training cycle.
Yeah, right, exactly. So we wouldn't be able to assist PISD with that. One of the things, the marshal programs will give PISD some flexibility. We're needing 38 PISD, we would, PISD needs to cover 38 campuses in our school. If you saw the press release, they said they're going to hire for 50. So they've got schools in, 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 in Murphy, in Richardson, in Allen, and in Dallas. And so one of the things the superintendent asks is, she's having some issues in one of her cities. She said, Chief, can you provide? No, I can't, I can't work outside of my jurisdiction. And so having those marshals will take that problem off of her hands. She can put those marshals wherever she needs to. So, and then also, a matter of cost. So we split that cost 50-50. Her call, our PISD's cost would have been about 8 million, but that's just for Plano, that's just for the 38 in Plano. And so she's got to cover the other campuses as well. And so as, as you may have seen, I think it's about 4.1 for them to cover down on these 50 officers. It would have been almost that much for us to do just her, the schools that they have in Plano, and then that doesn't count those other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Appreciate it. The next item is community investment program.
Our community investment program totals $340 million. The other night, we had a series of department heads that run the CIP come and go through all the different projects, unless you have any questions from the other night?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that was very comprehensive.
Very comprehensive. Then we can get on to the question of the proposed Avalorm tax rate.
Okay.
So Mayor and Council, we, we had direction from Council that the maximum the tax rate would be is the current tax rate, which is .4176. We had this discussion about the voter-approved rate without increment coming forward, which was .4060. So those were the two numbers that we used. In that time, we had talked a little bit about bringing back some additional information, and I sent that to you today, and I apologize again about the lateness of this. Part of that was the salary comparisons, and so I did supply Council with some of that survey data from other area cities showing what compensation adjustments look like, not only for this year, but also for last year. And it does look like that 3% is falling short of where the other area cities are. Mark's characterization is that Plano was head and shoulders above other cities for for many, many years, and they have been aggressive about catching up to Plano, and a lot of them have. And so in order to make sure that we don't start falling behind in a meaningful way, it looks like the, the need would be approximately 4.5% at this point to be able to keep up, and that would also preserve some of those funds for that compensation philosophy plan to come in and also start taking meaningful steps towards that this year as well. Additionally, I did share with Council that, you know, from what Chief Drange just shared, PISD to fund the school marshal program, it's about $4 million. The state funding that they've supplied to cover that program is not going to cover the $4 million, they're getting a million from the state, so they have a $3 million hole. They have shared with us that, you know, our partnership is meaningful to them, and if there is anything that the city can do, it would be much appreciated, but they also understand we're in a tough budget cycle is as well. So those two items are obviously for Council to be able to consider. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer questions and hear direction from where Council would like to go.
So as normal, for, for items that are really important, I want, I want everybody to be, to be able to have an opportunity to speak. I'm just going to go around the dais and let everybody kind of give their thoughts and, and where they'd like to see the, the tax rate. So if at all possible, I'm going to let Councilmember Cadelli start.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the opportunity to talk about this. So I, I've been wrestling with this because this is a difficult budget, more difficult than than some that we've had in the past few years. Obviously, fairness to employees and staying competitive regarding compensation is critically important, so is fairness to residents and businesses who are taxpayers regarding taxes. The budget is a balancing act, and this year, that balancing act is especially difficult. I want to first say that I've been looking into the numbers, you know, regarding what other cities are doing. I want to first say that I've been looking into the numbers, you know, regarding what other cities are doing and what we need to do to remain competitive in the employment marketplace. And I agree with the city manager. I support the four-point-five percent across-the-board raise. I think that to remain as competitive as we have been in the employment market, we have to do that. You know, the numbers, the numbers bear that out. And when you call nine-one-one, it has to be the best of the best who are coming. If we want a vibrant city, we have to have the best of the best planners, you know? If we want our trash to be picked up and not pile up outback, we have to be able to hire qualified drivers for waste collection vehicles who have a CDL. And so, we're going to have to remain competitive in the employment marketplace. So, I support that recommendation from the city manager. At the same time, we have to look at affordability for our residents and businesses who pay taxes. I have, I've put a lot of time, and I appreciate that Karen and her team, Casey who's here, have put a lot of time into answering my questions regarding affordability. At a tax rate of forty-one-point-seven-six percent, keeping the same tax rate as last year, the average Plano homeowner who has a homestead exemption but no other exemptions would see an increase in their tax bill of ten-point-two percent, which is, according to the spreadsheet I've got here, is the most, or the highest increase in the twenty years that are on this chart. Twenty years from fiscal year two thousand three, two thousand four to the present. There's no other year that has that, that change of ten-point-two percent next to it. And when you take into account on top of that, the change that has to be made in the solid waste rate, the increase in the water rates, which obviously have gotten better since we first saw them, which is good news, but that's still an increase. Our residents and businesses are going to be feeling a squeeze. So, you know, I think that we have to, we have to be very careful about taxation. We've been talking about going above the voter approval rate of, or the one year, you know, what would be the one year without, you know, rollover increment voter approval rate of forty-point-six-zero. And at that one-year voter approval rate, our budget was already going to grow, seven percent. And obviously, if we have more revenue, that percentage will be higher. The staff very nicely prepared analysis going back twenty years. And that came out of an exchange that city manager Israelson and I had, where, you know, we're talking about a look back essentially, using the rollover increment from the past three years. And I said, "Well, that's not the whole picture because things were growing a lot faster before the last few years in terms of taxation, and the last few years, we've put the brakes on that a bit." And so, there's, there's a cycle. So, I wanted to see the past ten years to provide context. City manager Israelson pointed out, "Well, if you only get the last ten years, you're missing what happened when the city lost a lot of ground during the Great Recession," which was a great point that the city manager made. So, the analysis went back twenty years. And as we also know, I think it was oh-six, oh-seven, the city adopted a two-cent property tax increase to pay for the Economic Development Incentive Fund. So, that makes, you know, before that year and after that year, not really apples-to-apples. So, I just started the year after that, oh-seven, oh-eight, and ran some numbers. And, you know, I think we're doing a lot better than other cities. But you'll still see that if my numbers are correct, and again, I just used the calculator on my computer, but I'm sure these are in the ballpark, and I think they're correct. Sixty-two-point-two, sorry, sixty-two-point-six percent growth in the average tax bill for, for the average homeowner with a homestead exemption but no other exemptions. CPI inflation from July two thousand seven to July twenty-twenty-three, I did July because July twenty-twenty-three is the last month that there's data for, is forty-six-point-eight percent, which is, which is less than that. So, even with the actions we've taken over the last few years, if you look at that, you know, sixteen, seventeen-year period, the average homeowner is still seeing growth of their, of the dollar amount of their tax bill that exceeds inflation. And, and then, you know, and part of that, by the way, is that we have an increasing number of exemptions. Obviously, the more senior tax freezes and other things that we have, that pushes the tax burden onto people who are not seniors, who don't have that freeze. And so, there's a lot going on there. I think that, you know, we have a city that's a great value, and I want to make it clear I'm not suggesting otherwise. But also, if you look at general fund growth and combined budget growth net of payments to North Texas Municipal Water District over that period, they also exceed inflation plus population growth, even with our actions over the last few years. All of that is to say, we're in a position where we absolutely have to, we have to do what we have to do to attract and retain great employees because the city is a service organization and our residents need and demand great services. At the same time, we need to deliver affordability to our residents. And I'm not comfortable with the, you know, the ten-point-two percent increase year-over-year, which again, would be the highest in the last twenty years. Though it also bears mentioning that last year, that change was only point-four percent. And, you know, the CPI inflation was eight-point-five percent. And then, when you throw population growth in, you know, that, that was, that was one-point-three percent as well. So, I'd like for us to look at alternatives, to do the four-point-five percent, but be at or absolutely as close to the forty-point-six-zero as we can be. I'd like to look at fees for things that are optional. Like, I'm a member, you know, at the Tom Mullenbeck Center. I love the Tom Mullenbeck Center. It's a great place to workout when I get the time to do that. And I'm not looking at numbers that Karen and her team have prepared, but, and thank you again for that. But, you know, I'd like to look at us getting closer to cost recovery, you know, maybe not a hundred percent cost recovery right now, but closer to cost recovery on some of these things. Other things that we can change in the budget so that it's not so heavily on property taxes because residents are, are going to be hit hard this next year if we don't do something about that. And another idea I have, we've got a great new policy to cap the transfer to the Economic Development Incentive Fund at ten million dollars. Last year, it was ten-point-three. So, if we were to retroactively apply that policy, that would result in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer from the Economic Development Incentive Fund to the general fund. And in fact, if we really retroactively applied the policy, which, which says, you know, CPI inflation, you know, such that it would be, for it to be ten million this year, it would actually be about nine-point-seven million last year, and then inflation would have taken it up to ten million. So, if we take it down to nine-point-seven million, that would be a six-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer from...
I don't want to, I don't want to offend you.
Oh, sure, sure.
We're talking about tax rate.
Yes.
And we can...
Oh, sure, sure, yeah.
We can let the city manager work on solutions, whatever that tax rate is.
Okay, absolutely. I'll wrap that part of it up really quickly then. But I'd be, I'd be in favor of doing that with the Economic Development Incentive Fund. And also, the final thing I was going to say on alternatives, and then I'll let the city manager come up with better ideas probably than the ones I'm presenting. But we've got the DART funds, we didn't budget them. I think we could go even lower on the contribution to the Capital Maintenance Fund this year because there are going to be projects in there that could be eligible for DART funding. And I understand that's not guaranteed, and that's why we didn't put it in the budget. But I think if we look at things that are, one, eligible for DART funding, and, two, projects that need to be done in the next few years, but it's not an absolute emergency that they're done this year, we could take those out of the budget and say those are going to be done with the DART funds, you know, which it's highly likely we'll get, though we're not absolutely counting on them. Maybe there are better ideas that the city manager has. But basically, what I'm saying is I'm absolutely in favor of the four-point-five percent raise. And, you know, I'd, I'd like to be at forty-point-six-zero for the tax rate or go down trying, you know, and get absolutely as close as we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes, well, this is why they voted us to take this job. And this is my first go at this, so please be patient. Though I'd like to see the, personally, I'd like to see the, stay at the forty-point, forty-point-six-zero. I don't know if that's reasonable because our most, if we look at this as a corporation, the reason the city, the Plano is the city of excellence is the people. And, you know, we've, we've lost good people to our cousins to the north because we've trained them, they're experienced, and they saw opportunities where they can grow. And vice versa, there are people wanting to come to Plano because it is the city of excellence. That's our, that's the one thing we have. And it's anybody from the maintenance shed all the way to our deputies, to our chiefs, to our city managers. It's the whole gamut of, that's who we're representing here. So, I think our total compensation package that we looked at, that LaShawn was presenting to us, Ms. Ross was presenting to us, that's one of the best I've ever seen. We were sitting here just laughing about the insurance, okay? But that all being said, though, it comes at a cost, it does. And, you know, if we stay at point-four, forty-sixty, we still have to reduce our budget by, what was it? Six-point-two million? Was that correct?
We were reducing the budget by six-point-two, get to the forty-sixty, and then we would have to come up with a differential for the another one-and-a-half percent if it's at four-and-a-half percent.
Exactly. So, I mean, when we said there, we have an increase of point, as our proposed rate of forty-one-seventy-six, I was hoping that that would help cover this increase in the cost of our staff, of everyone that we have here, and still keep the services that we have. I mean, we can go through line items on a capital improvement fund, that's all bonding. And of course, debts, and we're paying off the debts. But I'm just talking about our general funds that we have to maintain to keep the staff that we want, you know? This is where I'm having the struggle. And, you know, though I'd hate to see an increase in the property rates, I think that it's something, if we're going to have to cover the cost of labor and keep quality people here and provide the great service we have, that we should, we should be leaning toward the point-four-one-seven-six as the proposed tax rate. I think that's where we have to go, in my opinion.
Thank, thank you. Mayor Protem?
So, I have a couple of questions. It's two-point-five million for every one percent for the...
Across all funds, yes.
All right, so, to get to four-and-a-half percent, you're going to need an additional, what, three-and-a-half?
It's about three-point-three million dollars.
Three-point. All right, so if...
Karen's shaking her head, so that's a yes.
Three-point-three, okay. So, in the budget that you proposed, you have three-point, you have three percent?
Correct.
All right, so, if we wanted to get down, we'd have to, but also have four-point-five percent. We'd have to cut out six-point-two million plus find another...
Three-point-three.
Three-point-three million. So, we're looking at close to ten. Okay. Do you see a way to do that?
I, I will share that it, you will feel it as a community. So, there, over the last several years, going to the, to the no-new-revenue rate, there just candidly, there's no, there's no pots of money, there's no secret money, there's no, it's, it's all out there. Y'all see it. And the areas that it will be taken from will be things that affect infrastructure, affect programs and services. It will, it will show up someplace. So, if Council gives me the direction of Mark, we're going to have the, you know, the one-year voter-approved rate, the forty-sixty, and we want you to go find the additional three-point-three million dollars. I will bring you back a budget that has that in there, that, you know, I can absolutely do that. But if it comes from infrastructure projects and we're delayed in filling a pothole or we're delayed in repairing an alley, a road, whatever that might be, it will be more expensive when we come back and do that, do that two years from then, and we will have, have that impact. So, we can absolutely go do that, but we're at that point where we're going to feel it. We're going to feel it in the infrastructure projects, we're going to feel it in the programs and services. We're just at that point in our lifecycle and in our economics at this point. So, absolutely, there are paths to be able to do that. And I, you know, I am taking back all the feedback from Council. And if you give me that direction, I promise you, we will hit the number and we will do it the best we possibly can with minimizing impact. But I don't want, I don't want to sell Council that it won't be felt because I think that that's, that's being disingenuous with what's actually going to happen.
Can you remind me how much the new positions that you're proposing in this budget added up to?
About three-point-three million dollars. The new, all the new positions. But I thought just in the general fund, I thought it was...
Oh, just the general fund?
So, that's about what we're looking for?
What the difference should be.
Yeah.
I think that the challenge that we have with, with the new positions, and trust me, I've spent a lot of hours thinking about that aspect, too. The challenge for the new positions is this, we have increased workload. We're having increased demands from, from citizens. We're having an increased number of projects that we're trying to compete with and complete. And if we don't add the positions, that we're at a breaking point with where we are in our service levels. So, I, just being honest, we, we will see a decline in service levels. And I feel like we're going to be adding more work that we should be adding positions to the existing, existing staff. And I, I just would caution that we would need to lower expectations for what the service level would be if we don't add those staff members in.
Okay, and Mark was correct, it's three-point-three million dollars.
I just wanted to ask those questions. I, I need to think about it a little bit.
You're not ready.
I'm not ready to say. I just want to, I wanted to ask those questions and listen to everybody else first.
Councilmember Horn?
Yeah, one, maybe Karen, you might know, on the average home, now with the, the school homestead exemption going to a hundred thousand dollars, when we're looking at the city tax, ISD tax, the county tax, and also Colin College, how would that all calculate out as an overall tax burden?
We did do that before, and it's going to go down like seven-hundred on the PISD side for an average home.
Thanks. Deputy Mayor?
So, unlike Rick, Councilman Horn, I have no problems. I don't have any struggles, I don't have any problems in supporting the city manager's proposed tax rate. And the reason for that is because I disagree with Councilwoman Rick Deli about the huge increase in tax. I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we cut everything to the bones for the past four years. We grabbed money that was right and left everywhere, you know, that we could find in order to keep our no-new-revenue tax rate. So, at this point, it looks like we're getting a major increase in tax rate, but we're not. If you look around to all the different cities, they're, all their proposed tax rates are all mostly higher than ours. And they are increasing their competition against us. They're using us as a target practice. And unfortunately, Plano is not, you know, a nineteen-year-old kid. You know, we, we are middle-aged. We got problems, we got infrastructures that we got to fix. Unlike some of our, you know, newer, younger, prettier cities, they don't have those problems. You know, we need cosmetic surgeries to, in order to be competitive. You know, that is life. We need Botox, that's right. So, you know, we can't, we can't keep doing this juggling act of, you know, I'm going to take some money from here, I'm going to try to find it in some cubbyhole, and, you know, and maybe we'll be able to balance the budget. That is just not the way to, to operate a city. I mean, in business, I've been in small business, I mean, Councilwoman Smith, you've been in business. We, we don't, you don't operate a business... We don't operate a business by, you know, cutting our, you know, our quality in order to make sure that our cost out there is, is, you know, it's cheap. That's basically it, cheap. So, what do you want? Do you want target or do you want luxury? So, in Plano, we're city of excellence, right? So, I, I don't, I don't like, I don't like the fact that we're always here crunching numbers of, you know, this penny and that penny. But we really need to look at the bigger picture, and that's what our job is. We, as city council, our job is to be board directors, to approve or disapprove certain things rather than looking around, trying to help our excellent staff find money that doesn't exist. I mean, we, we have great staff. I mean, we, we have great staff, and, and when we're saying, oh, we love you, we, we want to keep you, and then turn around and say, oh, but, you know, let me help you find some, let me, let me help you improve your, your, your recommendation. I mean, what are you saying? You're, you're basically slapping them across the face. So anyway, I, I have no problem, no clowns.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I'm probably gonna surprise some folks here. I agree with Councilwoman Rick Deli about the, the big jump this year in homestead taxes. However, I came up with different math, and I'd like to compare notes. So yes, it's a ten-point-two percent jump in the homesteaded tax bill, as opposed to a five-point-two-two percent over the entire prior four years. So over that five-year period, including this next fiscal year, that would be a total of a fifteen-point-nine-six percent tax increase on that homesteaded property. But what I'm showing for CPI, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, is twenty-point-seven-seven percent increase over that same year. So the tax increase would be fairly less than inflation over that same time. I also looked back over the, the twenty-year history of this data, thank you for that, and starts in two thousand three, two thousand four, and from then until two thousand eight, when the Great Recession started, we had an increase in the budget, net of the Water District, of twenty-nine-point-three percent. MCI, Municipal Cost Index, which is what our costs are based on, over that same time period, was thirty-point-oh-nine percent, right about neck and neck. This was back when the world was normal. And then the Great Recession happened, the world turned a little topsy-turvy, we went through a roller coaster in the intervening years. Between then and two thousand twelve, when the ship sort of rioted, we had a two-point-three-six percent increase in budget over those four years, but MCI plus population growth was twelve-point-six-three percent, massive imbalance. Between then and two thousand nineteen, when we started adopting the no-new revenue rate, we had a thirty-six-point-eight percent increase in budget, but only a twenty-three-point-four percent increase in MCI plus population, massive imbalance the other way. And then from two thousand nineteen to when we started adopting the no-new revenue rate to present, it's about a twenty percent increase in budget, but a twenty-seven percent increase in MCI and population. Between two thousand eight and two thousand twenty, which is when the world, world really turned upside down, we had a forty-point-two-five percent increase in budget and a forty-point-nine-three percent increase in MCI and population. By the end of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year, we had achieved equilibrium again. And when I ran in two thousand nineteen, I had only intended on adopting the no-new revenue rate for two years in a row. I said at least two years, but still. The reason we kept going was because of the turbulent, uncertain environment. Now, for the past, we had rioted the ship by two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. In the past two years, inflation went off the rails. So going all the way back to twenty, two thousand eight, not all the way back to the two thousand three beginning, but when things started to, when the imbalance began, we've had a sixty-eight-point-one percent increase in the budget, net of the Water District, to present, including the proposed budget. And I'm sorry, not including that, a seventy-three percent increase in MCI plus inflation. So MCI plus inflation has gotten ahead of us since two thousand eight. We had rioted the ship by the time inflation went off the rails, but the ship came unmoored again. All that said, we have, we have to balance multiple things. We have to balance maintaining excellent city services and continually re-earning the name, the City of Excellence, with fiscal stewardship, because we can never forget that the city's money is not actually the city's money, it's the taxpayers' money. We are charged with managing that responsibly. We also have to balance the present with whatever situations the present throws at us, whether that's two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand eight, all sorts of stuff can happen with the future. And I, I try to keep that fifty-year roadmap of what is Plano going to look like when I'm long gone, and, and make sure that I wasn't the one that screwed that up. So with all of that said, I would support the forty-one-point-seven-six tax rate if we can devote the delta between forty-point-four-zero-six-zero and four-one-seven-six to a compensation fund, because we still have a lot of uncertainty with the outcome of the compensation study, any sales tax surplus, and the outcome of DART. And if we can sock away that money in a compensation fund that could be used for salary, over hires, and not just for public safety over hires, but technology services, neighborhood services, anybody that might need it, as well as additional forms of compensation, like a supplement to the proposed insurance premium hike. And if we didn't use that excess this fiscal year, that we could roll it over to next fiscal year for the anticipated increases then as well, because I recognize that our biggest expense is our people, and that's what keeps us the City of Excellence. But that's, that's the circumstance under which I would be comfortable adopting the four-one-seven-six rate.
Thank you. Councilmember Horne?
Homer.
What did you call me?
Homer.
Combine them, we're just... So we've been given so much information since Monday, and a lot today, and quite honestly, I did not have a lot of time on my schedule to, to deep dive the way some of my colleagues have, and so thank you very much for the work that you did. I was, do you have a PowerPoint presentation I can refer back to?
It's only Excel right now, on the calendar.
Yeah, so, so I, and I, I do mean that in all seriousness, I really appreciate my, my counsel here and, and all the preparation and, and all the different ways of looking at this, this challenge, and it's eye-opening hearing the, the changes with, with the inflation. I think most of you probably saw the article that Plano got an award, I don't know that we're super proud of, that we're the, the highest inflation rate in the nation, so am I saying that right, Mark?
I hope not, but...
I thought it was, I thought we were the highest...
It's something, something to that nature, highest, highest adjusted year-over-year cost of living increase.
Yeah.
Yes, there was something along that, but we still...
It's very vague.
We're questioning that.
Okay, well, well, so maybe that was planted by, by staff, I'm teasing, but the, and a lot of our staff don't live in, in the city, but regardless, that was, that was eye-opening. I think my temptation in hearing about the need to compete, I mean, immediately, I, my mind goes to, well, we need to be the best, we need to take care of our staff, we need to have the top-paying first responders in the metroplex. And so my mind kind of went to, how can we be creative, how can we do that? And as Maria very well pointed out, that's not our job, we've got an amazing staff to figure that out. So happy to have Ms. Ross leading those efforts, and, and as she said, always looking for creative ways to make sure that we are providing amazing benefits and, and ways to attract and retain our employees. So I, I think we have the experts here, they're, they're already doing the best that, that they can do with what we've got, and I, I feel like, I really appreciate your suggestion, Shelby, for setting those dollars aside. I think that sounds like a great, a great solution. I'm, I'm still digesting things as well, and this is a lot of information to take in, but just as a general directive, I, I wanna support making sure that our, that our employees are taken care of.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Munz, just trying to get it right. I mean, pretty much everything's been said. I think we all have different opinions and questions about things, but overall, everybody here at this dais wants what's gonna be the best for our citizens and the ability for us to continue to deliver the service level that, that makes us Plano. I, I think, starting out, and I think Deputy Mayor mentioned this, but it is interesting that Plano, of the least twenty cities around the, you know, around us here in the, in the metroplex, we have the lowest tax rate of any of them. The, the only one that's close is Allen's, our neighbor in Allen, and, and they don't have the homestead exemptions that, that we have. So, so really, they're not anybody close to us. And I think that's at the four-point-four-one-seven-six that, that we're talking about. So I mean, I'm, you know, long story short, if that's what the city manager thinks that we need to continue delivering the level of services and buying the, the equipment, I, I hope everybody's paying attention that, in, in our solid waste area, the equipment that we use to do that service has doubled in price. That's not cheap, and that's assuming that we can still get them, and sometimes the cost is gonna be higher by the time that comes across. So I, I think we're starting from a good place, I have every confidence that between now and when we actually adopt, we vote on the, the, the actual number that it's gonna be, that if there's a way that the city manager and staff determine that we can still deliver those services that everybody expects and pare the, the final number down, he's gonna do that. But I, I said the other night, and I'll say it right now, I mean, that we would not be who we are without our people. And if it takes, you know, keeping point-four-one-seven-six to do that, then, then that, that's, that's what we need to do. So I'm, I'm supportive of that number, and I will leave it to you to tell us if we can change that.
Let me finish. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Mayor Proton?
All right, so with your recommended budget, since you only had the three percent in there, you're gonna have to make some adjustments to get up to four-point-five, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I would be comfortable supporting the, your recommended budget if that change you make to get there does not come from cutting infrastructure, but I might tell you how to do it, but I, well, the struggle I'm having is with three-point-three million dollars of additional staff. So, I mean, that's where I would prefer that it came out, but I don't like the idea of cutting infrastructure projects to get to that.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So a, as I said when I started out, I, I fully support the four-point-five percent pay, across-the-board pay increase, and the two million dollars to implement the compensation philosophy study. Because each percentage is about two-point-five million, that, that means essentially, we're putting the equivalent of a five-point-three percent raise toward compensation adjustments, because, you know, four-point-five plus the two million for the compensation philosophy study, if that was across the board, it would be equal to point-eight percent. And, you know, heck, if we're talking about, you know, we need to go higher, we can have that conversation, too. What I would urge us to do, though, is, is with respect to what Councilmember Williams, and I believe also Homer, said, I do anticipate that we will have additional needs next year for employee raises, I mean, we do every year, and we're, we're gonna be implementing a compensation philosophy study, but some of the direction that was given was forty-one-point-seven-six, and then leave some of that money, you know, sitting until next year to finish implementing the compensation philosophy study. I, I think our, you know, our residents would probably prefer that we leave that money in their pockets until next year, if we're gonna spend it next year, and tax them then. So looking at, looking at the money that's going to be required to implement this, you know, we said it was an additional three-point-three million. The plan that was presented to get us to forty-point-six-zero, it took about, what, six-point-four, six-point-five million?
Six-point-two, yep.
Six-point-two, okay. Out, you know, so that, that means, and that was a one-point-one-six cent decrease, so we're, we're probably looking, you know, somewhere around five million dollars for each cent of the tax rate. So just doing the quick math, the three-point-three million for the, to, to do the four-point-five percent raise, added on to the plan that we already had to be at forty-point-six-zero, would be, I, I believe, about another two-thirds of a cent, you know, which would, that would put us at maybe forty-one-point-two-seven, I'm sure it's not exactly forty-one-point-two-seven, but it's, it's somewhere in that forty-one-point-three ballpark, you know? Honestly, even that is, is higher than I'm really comfortable with, because I'd, I'd love to, I'd love to see us do the things with the DART funds. I, I really think the thing with the Economic Development Fund, I mean, if it's a good policy this year to cap at ten million, it's a good policy for last year, too. But, but, but anyway, if, if we were in that range, I might, I might be able to support it, so...
There's seven of us that, that will want the forty-one-seventy-six.
Sure, sure, and...
So all I'm saying is...
Yeah.
I appreciate it, but let's, let, let's let Mark come up with solutions to get us to whatever. I'm gonna be in favor of the forty-one-seventy-six, same tax rate as last year. As Rick said, we're the lowest tax rate in all of Collin County and most of the metroplex. And we can't race to the bottom, we just can't. To get to the services that I think all of us expect in this community, we're, we're going to have to do that. We have no control over appraised values, and if we act as though the appraised values are an act of something that we've done, that's wrong. We're doing the best we can to keep this rate at the, at the lowest of anyone around us, and comparably, cities that are much like us, Irving, Arlington, people like that, it would, they're significantly higher. So we're doing a terrific job of being able to keep that number low, and, and I think, I think that's a credit to the, the city management and being able to have such a low tax rate. And, and because of that, I, I think we need to really keep an eye on, and we've made such efforts to make our seniors be more affordable in the areas that we can at least try to help, which is thirty percent of our property tax revenue. And thirty percent of our residents have senior exemptions, so that's significant. And yet, we wanna continue to do that, and we will continue to do that, because I think it's, it's important for us to make sure that they're as, as relieved as possible regarding property tax. So I'm, I'm going to be in favor of the point-four-one-seven-six as well, and so I believe there's some direction for you, city manager.
There is, but Mayor and council, before we, I just need a couple of quick things. We talked about, and I sent this out, about the four-and-a-half percent raises, and I saw unanimity, I think, around the dais to, to get that done, seeing head nods. I did not hear with that on sharing with the PISD funds, and I know we were kind of focusing on this a little bit different, but sharing in some of those costs, that's not baked into this budget. And what I'm, what I'm hearing is, keep it as low as possible and consider that next year or future years, but this is not going to, to happen particularly this year, and I, I'm making sure, that's why I'm asking the question, making sure I'm, I'm hearing it correctly. And the other two points I, I heard were, I heard six-point-two million dollars, as long as it's going towards compensation in some form or fashion, we, you're, you're okay with that, and no infrastructure, don't touch the infrastructure side of things. I wanna make sure I'm seeing nods around the, the dais, that that's where the, at least the majority is fairly comfortable.
And Mark, one, one thing I was, would like to add, you and I have talked about it already, and I know you've already been thinking about it, is, you know, the, as with Councilman Williams, I'm concerned, I wanna be sure that we take care of our employees and public safety, and we keep the best of the best. I know we do the, the salary survey, and we've seen, we do it, we increase, and then everybody watches us, and then as soon as ours goes in, they, boop, they increase theirs again, so they keep jumping ahead of them. So, so I, I'd like to see us do, you know, at least twice a year, you know, reviews and surveys of the market, so we're not, you know, behind the eight ball, and then maybe we change it up and we keep everybody guessing, but I think that would be a good step for us, too, to consider that.
I don't have an issue with that, but I think that's where holding on to that two million dollars to start that compensation adjustment is, is critical also, so that if they, if there are countermeasures that are taken, we're able to kind of continue our, our movement with our plan.
Oh, Mayor, I just wanted to ask, so I'm, I'm a bit unclear if, if the, we had a plan at forty-point-six-zero, obviously the compensation, which I support, we all support, takes us above that, I was hoping to take other things out to, to stay at forty-point-six-zero, I can see that's not the direction of the council, but I still don't, I'm still not clear what we're talking about as far as... But I still don't, I'm still not clear what we're talking about as far as the funds that get us up to 41.76. What, you know, are, are we talking about using those a certain way? Or I just didn't understand what we're, what we're saying there.
Go ahead. Councilman?
Yes, the, the delta between the city manager's recommended budget and the, the 460 was 6.2 million. Now, we had discussed how we were going to come up with that, if we were going to go to what we assumed was the, the voter approval rate. Now, because of, at least from my standpoint, because of the uncertainty with how the, the DART work's going to go, the sales tax surplus, which I didn't say this, but I would like to put any sales tax surplus into our rainy day fund this year because while we may be achieving equilibrium with the budget, I don't trust that the world is achieving equilibrium. So I want to be prepared for eventualities. But then also the uncertainty of the compensation study. We can agree to the 4.5% increase right now, but on the other side of the compensation study, we may need to make further and more creative adjustments. And to that end, so I anticipate that we might need that 6.2 million, the entirety of it. But the, to offer some clarification, I was only, I wasn't anticipating that we would automatically roll some of that over to next fiscal year. I was saying that if we happen to not spend it all this fiscal year, then we could roll that over. But I would want it earmarked for compensation.
It would be the priority for the increase in, in compensation. And the bottom line is, and to make sure we're clear, of the 6.2, 3.3 would immediately go to that additional 1.5%. And we'd be talking about the delta between the 6.2 and the 3.3 as being dedicated towards compensation adjustments with compensation philosophy adjustments or being held to be able to be used if there is... To pivot if necessary. That's the way that I understood that proposal.
That's what I intended, yeah.
Okay, well, well, thank you for that clarification. Well, yeah, thank you.
Goodbye.
To know one another, we socialize together, and more than anything, we keep each other healthy and accountable. You know, we have fun. Since we do have beginner swimmers, all the way up to very advanced swimmers, we need teachers at every level. But what we're looking for are people who enjoy teaching, who love the water, and who want to work part-time. You know, it's a pretty much a part-time job, which is great.